I think we'll kick off the meeting. Welcome to everybody. Good to see a full committee here and officers. Just go through safety information. There's no planned fire drill. So if the alarm goes off, please exit via the main entrance and turn right down the rung and assemble by the cathedral. Apologies for absence. I believe there were four.
Four questions and apologies.
Excellent, thank you. Declarations of interest. Can I ask if there are any declarations of interest in relation to items on the agenda today? No, no declarations of interest, okay. Minutes of previous meeting. Has everybody read the minutes? And does anybody have any comment on those minutes? Yes, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just one thing which I'd like clarification on. Item eighteen is the draft statement of accounts twenty twenty three, twenty four. Note three says it was noted that an objection to the accounts was being investigated. Am I right in thinking that the objection was actually in relation to the previous year? So I note that the the according to the council's website, the certificate of completion for the previous year's accounts hasn't been issued yet. And I think that when I inquired at the meeting, it was indicative that there was an objection relating to that year around within twenty twenty three, twenty four. Could I just clarify first?
Yes, so through the Chair, I can confirm it's right here. So if you're interested. Yes, done. Can I have some more seconds please? Nick, thank you. Ten minutes, that's agreed. Item five is the action sheet. This is just noting down actions that have come from previous meetings. Just to check if there are any comments from anybody on the action sheet. No, no comments, thank you. Item six is Chair's business. Just going to say something briefly in this item. Just to take a moment to set some context for this meeting really. We've got a lot of items on the agenda today that will be causing a lot of interest as well as concern for people around the city, I think. Just like to remind members of the committee of the training we've recently received and also the context of the Sitfor report, which is presented later on. All reiterating that this committee will function best when politics is left at the door and we all work together to ensure the best possible outcomes for the council and the city. So please just ensure your questions are relevant to officers and support Harrington Auditor in doing their work. Okay, thank you. We now move to public forum. And I believe that we only have one person here from public forum, which is Dan, sorry, I've only got my short distance glasses on, so.
You can tell by the camera.
So Dan, you have two supplementary questions.
Yeah, so supplementary question to my first question, which is about why this meeting is not being webcast. The answer seems to imply that more technology is needed, but we already have the cameras in this room. We have the number of staff who operate these cameras. Why is this meeting not being webcast?
I'm not sure if we have anybody here that can answer that. We'll have to give you a written response on that one, Dan, I guess. If this is not here, thanks.
I have supplementary to my second question, which was about the additional costs. What is the current estimate of how much unplanned expenditure, that this will cost in this year? That particular detail wasn't given in the answers, but I would like a written response now, please.
Okay, we'll take that away from them.
Okay. I have a point of order as well. I believe this booth has given a supplementary question to you as Chair of the committee. According to Committee rules, C M R nine point seven, she's put that supplementary question to the Chair, so will it be answered?
I believe we only take supplementary questions when the questioner is actually present at the meeting, Dan.
Is that a rule?
Yes. Okay, that's public forum done for today, thank you. Okay, item eight on the agenda is the work programme. This is to note, but if anybody has anything that they believe should be added to our work programme over the course of the year, welcome to take suggestions now, but also welcome to receive them from anybody, you know, in writing as time goes on. If things arise and you think it might be something you should keep as a dream, I'm happy to hear about it. Has anybody got anything at the moment to comment on the work programme?
I mean, I'm happy with it, it makes sense. In terms of things that we might want to draw attention to if we can, I'm very mindful that since this detail was put forward, we've had the regulatory judgment on social housing and that part of that includes the performance around stock condition surveys. I think it would be very important to members of members here to know what the compliance of that is now that we've got that new programme in place. Because there are some quite heroic assumptions around the numbers that will be delivered over the next year or two, and I think this committee will have a view on how that performance is going. So if it's possible to have some information on that, that would be useful.
I think, Chair, we need to get them first and then see whether another committee is not doing that, because we need to make sure that they are not keeping to the work. So let's get them first, then work when they seem to see whether there's another committee who's dealing with this item, if not, then we'll call it out, this can be pocketed, the only committee to get that one they need. Thank you, Chair.
So yeah, we'll take that away and discuss that one. Item nine, internal audit update report. Simba is going to present this report to us.
Thank you, Chair. I'll take the report as read, but in summary, this report covers two items. The first one, the implementation of agreed management actions, and secondly, the audit summary with limited assurances. In relation to the implementation of agreed management actions, the reports, a deteriorating position from the one reported at the end of the year, the seventy seven percent is significantly below the target of ninety percent. As highlighted in this report, these targets need to be prioritised. Actually, that we are taking a detailed audit, I did have in the records, but it must be acknowledged that it is the responsibility of management to make sure that the agreed actions are delivered within the agreed timeline. While there is significant increased management oversight in terms of what I feel that director level and C O B, the process must be embedded in spite of regular performance management discussions. I've tried to give you the high level information in relation of how that target is performing by directors. I'll talk to the Chair and take any questions before I move to the next part.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Simba on board? Simon, yeah.
Probably does cross over, but I'll ask it, I'll ask it now. You've mentioned the seventy seven percent and that's a deteriorating position. And also we've got a number of limited and no assurance reports on the agenda today across a range of services and areas. I suppose the question is from insurance perspective, do you think things are getting worse?
Probably not necessarily on the basis that we report on a quarterly basis. So I would find that the performance at each quarter probably change or vary, but I think at this point in time, this performance below target. So I think that the only way we can be able to improve this to make sure that in prioritised this as part of what you do as good business, is as ensuring that we maximise the use of Pentana, which is an order system, in implementing and monitoring the reporting of the problems. But I don't believe that probably it has become worse, probably also due to the timing as well, in terms of the committing barriers, but it mustn't be an excuse to get to this position. But I recognise some of the problems that have given us to get to where we are.
Okay, I have David and then Abdul.
Thank you, Chair. I note on paragraph eight on page, bottom of page twenty, we talk about advertising for one and a half full-time roles. Sorry, there's a lot of background here, but I'm recording that. I'm just wondering if the fact that we're offering a half-time role is part of the issue we can't recruit, should it be two full-time roles? Give me the scope of what it needs to be doing at the moment, maybe two full-time people in post?
Probably not necessarily, I mean, the reason why probably we lose trouble to recruit, given that we are competing with some of the big players in Bristol as well, so there's something there around the remuneration of the auditors that probably the main kind of traps. But in terms of advertising for part was, it was also for flexibility, so a lot of people really wanted to do flexible working. And then I think in the context of that, that probably gets to where we are. And it is important that I need to recruit consistent with my budget. So I want a budget of point one, point five, but this doesn't necessarily mean that I need more, just our ability to recruit as well, but we'll try and see where we get to.
And just for content, Abdul. Just to follow up on that, how long have these vacancies been vacant? Simba.
Chair, that's a difficult question. I think we've been struggling to recruit for a very, very long time in terms of, but we've been able to, in some cases, to bring in colleagues. But we know that we have an agreement with K P M G, who support us on some of the work that we do. It's one of the reasons why we brought them in, to supplement the delivery of the plan, but also making sure that they help us with the expertise that we need in some areas where I believe I didn't have the sufficient resources. But yeah, I think we had a struggle to recruit over a long period of time, but it doesn't mean that it's always been the case, but yeah, we really struggled. We can be lucky times, but we just struggled to recruit.
Okay, Abdul.
Thank you, Chair. My question relates to section ten, implementation of agreed actions.
So Abdul, could you move your mic down a bit? I'm struggling here, thanks.
Sorry, it's a bit difficult to each other everything. Yeah, so my question relates to the table, table number two on section ten. And I'm a little bit concerned, if you have a look at the percentage performance per directorate and then you zoom into children and families, you'll see that the implemented assurance seems to be the lowest, three percent for children and families. And not yet implemented and overdue assurances seem to be the highest, forty seven. Can you explain what that is, please?
I don't think, I wouldn't be able to explain it. It's a question for management, I think, in terms of why we're in this position. Where we are reporting, as I said, it is their responsibility to implement the agreed actions. So yeah, we'll probably take the question to management, Simba. Unless, the senior manager, I can see him here, okay. Anna is here, the executive director for children. If you want to respond to now or not.
So, sorry. So my name is Hannah Woodhouse, I'm the executive director of children and education. So thanks for your question. I think we've got a number of assurance reports on the agenda today, and there are more as you know, coming through. I mean, I think it's fair to say that we can speak to the reports today, but as you'll be aware, the children and education director has been under a significant amount of pressure in terms of change as well as in terms of financial pressure. So I think the only thing I can say to you is that we're working really hard to make sure that we get that in a better position going forward and really conscious of the pressures on the services that we've got, some of which we'll talk around today.
So in terms of reassurance versus committee, would you be able to put a timeline on when some of these things can get better and have more implemented audit assurances?
I think we've got an audit programme which is set out and published tonight, but we'd expect to see that correct and correct itself as we go. And I'm happy to come back in order to see that change happen. I think we've got a number of assurance reports, which as I say, have gone through the system, which completed towards the end of the financial year, which were presenting challenges, and we can talk about some of those today. I would expect that to change as we go through the year ahead, now that we've got substantive issue across the directorate as a whole.
Excellent, done. Then Patrick and then Nick.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report. I noticed that we have, there seems to be a bit of a complication that audit has been struggling to get the necessary details and compliance from management level in departments. How big of a problem do we consider this to be and what sort of steps would be useful to take to help address this? Because obviously, I think we're all appreciative of the really stretched resources and the capacity of operational departments, but it is a bit, that they're aware of the need to compile audits.
I don't think it's a, I don't, I think it's a professional answer, but I think when you're working to know in terms of management and us getting the right balance between supporting business as usual, as well as providing assurance, so that change in more exists in terms of the terms of the work that we do. But I think it comes as to what I do in the team, with the team, and also what management does to help us to get to where we are. So I think, I don't think that there's a big problem, just making sure that we all are working together to get to complete the work that needs to be done in a year. But I don't think that this is a problem.
Okay, thank you. And just another sort of side-wide question about the decline in our level of assurance, level of implementation overall. Do we think this might have an impact on our future external audit status? For the council operations as a whole?
I wouldn't comment on the impact of that, because that view, that view be taken by the external auditor. But I think what I would, my comment would be, I think that we just need to make sure that we resolve the issues that we identify just to improve our governance. And I think that's probably the point that I would emphasise, but in terms of its impact on the external auditor, I think that's the view for the external auditor. And they do not rely on my work, but it is important that we do this, that we identify.
Thank you, Chair. I was just reading across the five appendices, and I noticed the first two, children and registered provision and education, other than school. They, in the management response, have got July twenty twenty four updates on what management is doing, what they're doing now. And the other three, appendix three, three, five, don't have that. Is that a function of when the original report was written or is that, or is there another explanation? I found it very helpful to see that as a progress tracker.
I think just based on the reporting, I think, in terms of where management are, remember that these bodies have led to the work, most of them were finalised in the last quarter and into Q one. So where people have made progress, they will say they will be able to implement in the early months, but where they haven't, or they're still working on the solutions, it might not have been there. I don't think there's a, that there's a, any reason to justify the differences apart from same probably as the reporting that has been done. But it is helpful, we probably have to make sure that where the outstanding can give you with an updated intervention date.
So I take it only to turn, if you want to come in here.
Thank you, Chair. Just a very brief comment. I think it's, it's only reflect, particularly if we look at what's been happening with childrens and families, that there has been a considerable churn in terms of staff and leadership within that department. Why I'm confident now is that we are both officers at the highest level, in particular leadership at the highest level, that are committed fully to addressing the issues that have been identified. And as a result, I would expect to see strong improvement in the implementation of the various reports that have been presented to you tonight.
Okay, and I think we are going to go into, into each of those appendices in a bit more detail. We're not too young.
So, Chair, just to explain, Chair, what we, what we plan to do is that the audit manager will briefly introduce the individual reports and we give the senior managers, the directors present here, to give an update or any comment that they would want before we give the audit committee the opportunity to ask the questions. So if you'll please introduce the first one, please.
Hi, I'm telling the audit manager responsible for these reports. We take them in turn. The first summary is appendix one, and that's children placed in unregistered provisions. I will assume that you've, you've actually read the report. But just to introduce it, there is a national problem of placement sufficiency. It is expensive and time-consuming for suppliers of places to register with Ofsted. This is a national issue. Children presenting with complex needs sometimes do so at very short notice, and it is difficult to actually find placements immediately. So there is an issue with having to place children in unregistered placements. So starting from that premise, we looked at the management and the organisation, the council that was in place to manage this process. We found some good practice in place. The directors have produced a practice direction which sets out how they would try and approach the process and what they would do in terms of monitoring the ongoing. There are also regular reports made to Ofsted on the process. We found that there were some non-compliance of the practice direction, and also it is probably time to review the practice direction in terms of what was actually practical, and also some of the things in there that we've moved on from. So management accepted the report. They put in place measures to implement the audit findings. There's been some progress already achieved against that. And colleagues from the directorates are here to provide that update and to answer any questions you may have.
Hello, yeah, I can bring an update. So to put it in context, as has just been said, there has been a national increase in the numbers of children in care, which is a huge issue around our placement sufficiency. We in Bristol have also seen an increase in our numbers of children in care. And so we are impacted by that. We've also undertaken quite a bit of work in terms of our placement sufficiency, as some of you will know, but we are still impacted by those issues. And so on a rare occasion, we have seven hundred and sixty nine children in care as of today. As of today, we have seven children placed in placements that are unregistered. What that means is they are not registered by Ofsted, and we have done that due to a number of factors really. Most often, these are our children, due to their own trauma, are displaying behaviours that other providers find, registered providers find unable to feel they can offer same care to, and so we are unable to identify registered providers. And so this audit has looked at those. The outcomes of that is around our management actions in terms of the quality assurance of those providers who aren't registered. So we need to take action around some of our processes. We've already done some of that. We have a standard template now in terms of our quality assurance framework, and we are reviewing a policy procedure that will go alongside our practice direction. Our practice direction was seen as good practice initially, not all local authorities need to do that. We decided that we should introduce a practice direction to enhance the oversight of children and these arrangements. So it goes above and beyond our statutory requirements. But what we now need to do now is review the requirements of that practice direction. We need to build in that quality assurance framework into that. That is due for the end of July twenty four. It is on track to be progressed by that time. We have signs in for our leadership meetings to have that new practice direction approved and signed off, and then we will have that in place.
Thanks, sorry, I shouldn't have just said, could you introduce yourselves before you give your report, sorry.
Sorry, I can introduce the director of children and families.
Thanks, Fiona. I'm going to throw open in a minute, but I just, I do have a question myself. You said it's not, that the practice directive is something that's not required generally where we're doing it. But placing children in these settings is actually illegal in the first place, isn't it? According to what I've been reading, so therefore I wouldn't expect, you know, given that we shouldn't actually be doing it, that there would, that there would be a wall around whether you do it, but.
I can answer, there is national recognition that these placements are sometimes used. So we are not uncommon in this sort of have to use these placements. So it is, it is common practice for local authorities to ensure that they have arrangements in place for when they place children in these unregistered provisions. It is unlawful, but our children's courts understand that this happens. They cannot instruct us to place children in these placements, but they are aware that these placements are being used for some of our children, and they have oversight of some of those children.
Okay, thanks.
And I just, I was just going to add that although it is unlawful, it is highly unlikely to have to be prosecuted around this, and we are not aware of any other local authority that has been prosecuted, despite us knowing it's a national issue.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Where shall we go first, Doctor Tom?
Thank you, thank you for the report. So looking at this on page twenty four, I'm just reading, two of the five children sampled by a term order had been living in an unregistered provision since March twenty twenty two and June twenty twenty two. So we have people, and I appreciate what you've just said in terms of not being prosecuted and so on, but we have essentially been breaking the law since twenty twenty two. Has this been brought to our attention previously? Has this been reported in any way, or has this just been happening without oversight?
So if I start, we have one child who has been placed since twenty twenty two, and that is a child who was placed in a, with a provider who was going through the process of registering with Ofsted. And through a number of planning issues, et cetera, the provider wasn't able to be registered. We don't, you know, the remainder of our children, the seven children that we have in registered provision, the remains of those children have all been in unregistered provisions during this year. So we have two that were placed in May, June, and four in July. So these are not children who've been in these placements long term. We usually have a number of children, and although we might have reported seven in twenty twenty three, there would have been different children. So these children, we are moving as soon as we can out of these unregistered placements.
Okay, but just to confirm on the second part of the question, what was the policy in terms of reporting these unregistered children? Was that just, was not reported to the Audit Committee or to any other committee, or to anyone, really? This was just something on its own and was just happening? Am I misunderstanding?
So, we have, so in order to make one of these placements, we have exact direct permission, and we inform the chief executive. We have highlighted that on our risk register. It has been the highest risk on our corporate risk register for quite a while now, for over here, so it has been highlighted as an issue.
Patrick? Apologies, I didn't see you, Council.
I work on the edges of the social care system, so I can understand there might be circumstances whereby children might, in an emergency scenario, need to be placed in an unregistered placement. However, what concerned me was that the follow-up checks weren't taking place. There wasn't a weekly check, there wasn't a monthly check. There's a whole list on section, point one, page forty-seven of the draft that I'm looking at, a whole list of things that weren't taking place in the follow-up. So, can you explain a bit more about why that wasn't happening, and can we be reassured that will be happening going forward?
So, there were two elements of checks. So, the first check is the quality assurance, so that's for the commissioning check. And what the audit found was that although these were being undertaken, they weren't being undertaken as quickly as you could eye before the placement, which we obviously explained is because we're making these placements in a very urgent situation. Usually, they weren't being able to be undertaken prior to that. And what we found was that we needed a more consistent quality assurance approach. So, we had different officers from the commissioning service undertaking visits without a clear template and without consistency. So, they were being undertaken, but we've now, in the new practice direction, we already have a new template, but we will have specifics around when and how those need to be undertaken, and then we'll have some training for those officers. In terms of the visits, visits are monitored. A few of these were missed, but not by much. So, we talk about weekly, we're not talking about a long time, so they were missed, it might be into the next week, et cetera. And we have oversight eye chair at a weekly meeting in which we look at when the child was last visited. The audit found that that wasn't being recorded consistently on the child's record, so it couldn't see my escalation in terms of being clear about when the child needed to be visiting. We've now rectified that, and the minutes of those meetings will always sit on a child's record, so they were being visited. We missed a few of those, but not significantly, and we now absolutely have oversight of them. We always did have oversight, but it wasn't evidence clearly on the child's record.
Patrick?
Thank you. Actually, I had a follow-up to the answer to Councilor Benkensop's question. With the child who's been in unregistered care since twenty-two, you said the provider wasn't able to register with Ofsted despite being in the process of registering when we first placed the child with them. Can I ask why they weren't able to register with Ofsted? Because that does seem like quite a big red flag.
It wasn't due to the care that they were offering the child, it was due to the regulations around and some planning permission regulations, but it wasn't about their day-to-day care of the child.
Were those planning permissions essential or important to creating an environment suitable for the child?
No.
Okay, I've got quite a few more people who want to ask questions. Just a reminder that what we're looking at here really are the audit findings and whether we're addressing those greatly. Rob?
I don't think anyone thinks that you make these placements because you haven't considered other alternatives. I think people understand why they're there. I want to ask about the commissioning in terms of, do you think you're doing the right things to prevent these things being needed? In other words, is there an acceptable amount of unregistered placements that we think we'll take for the next few years? Or are we doing commissioning things to mean that we'll hopefully not need these things as often in the future?
So, we have struggled really to get to know placements. We have hovered between five and ten for the last eighteen months, so for children. So, as of today, we have seven. But I suppose linked to that would be all our work around our sufficiency strategy. So, we have a draft sufficiency strategy that will go to our committee in August, and that is looking about how we absolutely promote our foster carers, how we promote our children's homes, and how we increase sufficiency across our city to increase the numbers of placements for our children that are registered.
And then, Catherine.
Thank you. A question about the first bullet, actually. I have read the others, but this one comes after a little alarm in the evening. No evidence of a visit to a property for a child that is placed there. And the responses, we're updating the practice document to say that that's not a requirement. Now, I'm sure it's not as bad as it sounds. If a child is placed, there's a social worker with them at the time, so we're not just shipping off someone to a mystery location. Someone is there, so perhaps that's what the practice reflects, is that the social worker does a risk assessment at the moment of arrival, which is almost in advance. Perhaps you can expand on that part.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, because these are urgent, we leave it to absolutely the last minute to agree to place a child in one of these places, and so we will spend as long as possible attempting to find a registered placement. So, because of the urgent nature, what we don't often have is our commissioning team being able to go and visit that placement. What we do have quite is absolutely a social, a qualified social worker will always place a child in a placement, so they will accompany the child and review the property, et cetera. We will also have done some checks, they're usually organisations that we're placing with, who we can either check with other local authorities who have children placed there. We ask for all their checks and all their paperwork, so we can do all the paperwork, and our commissioning team will do that. What they often don't expect to do is to actually visit the property, but absolutely the social worker will place a child.
I think that's much more reassuring than is written, so perhaps that's what's to be reflected in the practice motion.
I've got Jonathan, David, and then I think probably we'll move on to the next one.
Thank you, Chair, my question has already been answered.
Excellent. David?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask a follow-up question to Councilor Kins' point. I'll get too close to his microphone, there we go. That top bullet pointed one point eight, you talk about the exceptional circumstances that need to be made for non-visitable property. And then, in your management response, you do talk about trying to remove that requirement from the practice direction. Isn't that not just simply removing the problem from your list of things you need to do when you place a child? Because I think it's really important, particularly considering that Ofsted do seem to be looking at this case particularly carefully and threatening legal action against the council?
It will remain in the practice direction as last, but it won't be an absolute expectation. So, we were not meeting the requirements of the practice direction because we expected all properties to be visited on every occasion. And what we were saying was, actually, that at times is not possible, but that would be an exceptional circumstance. We can still have that in as an expectation, if at all possible.
Thank you. And can I just confirm whether those exceptional circumstances led to a child being placed to live on a, what had been narrow-boat of Manchester?
It would depend on, I'm not sure of that one, but it would depend on, it could depend on how far away that placement would be. So, if it was a long way away, and it's unlikely, the commissioning team would be able to visit beforehand.
So, it's geographical rather than time that's causing the issue?
Well, if the placement was in, so if we're waiting, we've worked all day and we can't identify placement for the child. So, if it's later in the day, it might be that the commissioning team then don't make the placement, but the social worker takes the child. If it's a placement in Bristol that's not registered, it might be that we would find somebody to go and do that together.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have to, yeah, I'll let you.
Just on the finances and resources side of this, page forty-four, right at the end, one point eight, we talked about finances, it says, there were no limitations in place for the cost of a registered provision. The total cost would be unknown due to the uncertainty in depth of placements. So, I mean, has that position changed, or is it something that we're thinking of actually trying to manage?
There are obviously financial implications for these placements, and they are often costly. At the point when we are in this position, we try and ensure that the child's safety is paramount. We look at what that will cost. We will then, and we will have an initial placement and a placement fee. We then review that on a weekly basis to ensure that actually the child's needs are still being met, and do we need that amount of care, and what care should that look like? So, it's under weekly review once a child is placed in this provision, and also that weekly review is the financial costing.
Okay, I think, Tony, you're not going to?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight that, I mean, and this is not a political comment, but the reality is that we are dealing with a broken system, and the underlying problem here is a lack of registered placements that we can put these children into. Now, it's something that we do need to fix, and I'm sure that everybody in this council is understanding of that need to be able to provide the right number of placements and for all those placements to be registered, but that will take time to do.
Thank you, Tony. I'm just going to ask, simple, and this is probably displaying my naivety as new chair, and this will reply to the five of these, but when do we get internal audit's judgment on whether the actions that are currently being taken are sufficient and have improved the situation?
As a principle, every audit with a limited or no assurance opinion will be audited in the following year. But if the work is done in the earlier month of the year, we need to follow up within after six months. We need to realise that we need to give management the time to implement, and for those arrangements to embed. Otherwise, if we do it quickly, I think we still come up with the wrong solution, given that some of the actions might take time to influence. So, we can't do any work before six months, otherwise we have the same bet.
Thank you. I think that's important in terms of the work that we do, to know that this won't be coming, you know, we've seen what the actions are that are being taken, but we will see again whether those actions actually worked, and that will be another chance for us to look into this necessary. And move on to the next.
Okay, the next report is education other than school, i.e. education provides children outside of that formal education setting. Following a specific case where a tutor complained that they'd not received payment from the council providing tutoring sessions, we were commissioned to review the system by which the tuition is contracted for and paid. Our review identified that actually identifying, contracting, and paying is quite a complex process, requires a lot of liaison, one-to-one between the team within the councils administering it, and between parents and tutors also. One of the issues was that what is delivered is often actually what is not contracted for. There are issues with changes in tutor and also quite high absence levels. So, we entered our review, we came up with a number of issues which we felt required management's attention. Those are included in the report, as is the management response. Once again, I'll hand over to representatives of the directorate to talk about the progress that's been made.
Hi, I'm Emma Lloyd, I'm Head of Service for Inclusion, but I'm going to be passing to Louise Arberry, who's the head of SEN, who's going to talk about what we've been doing so far. Good afternoon. The SEN services manages seventy-five personal budgets. These are delivered through four mechanisms, so direct payment, third-party arrangement, by combination, or by arrangement. The scope of the audit concerns payments by arrangement to the local authority. This means the local authority holds the funds and commissions the support as specified in the plan. This concerns ten personal budgets that we hold. At the time the audit was undertaken, the SEN team carried two manager vacancies, SEN team manager and SEN finance manager, two key operational roles. This did affect daily functions, finance-specific advice, and guidance opportunities, as well as business and user pathways were limited, as was support for the SEN finance team. Since this date, both vacancies have been filled, experienced members are staffed. It's important to note that the SEN team continues to under significant pressure. The team has four thousand six hundred and twenty-eight D H C Ps in service, and currently one thousand seven hundred and eighty assessments in progress. This is the highest B C C we've managed today. The team managed the notice packages and personal budgets and the financial arrangements and activities alongside of the statutory duties. Of course, this places significant pressure on both the service and individual team members. Of the key, the twelve key findings of the internal audit, the service has delivered five, and six are underway, one remains at risk. The key areas are already addressed and part of business as usual are dedicated personal budget mailbox for parent carers contact, clear messaging and documentation, sent a blue contact and changes to provision within the personal budget term if needed, written alerts to SEN offices, given notice that a personal budget term is coming to an end and the supplier end date is approaching. These alerts are given at a minimum of six weeks in advance. Supplier IDs included within our personal budget form. Standard operating procedures have been reviewed, updated and available to team. This continues. Annual review dates are tracked alongside the personal budget term, allowing the payment terms to run twelve weeks after the annual review meeting. This will ensure that a child or person is not there for that provision whilst the annual review is being processed, further agreements are sought, and requisitions raised. Offices requesting quotes to cover a fifteen-month period rather than twelve. This ensures that all provision is running up to twelve weeks after the annual review meeting to allow statutory processing to continue and provision doesn't stop. So, the key areas of development currently underway and on track are staff training, although procurement training has taken place with V C C procurement colleagues, specifically around procurement breaches. Market engagement has commenced, rounds of market engagement have been held for the I M S S framework and A L P. The tutor mentor therapist framework is due this month, with a round, a tender round in August. This activity will be ongoing and opens through the year to give providers sufficient opportunities to bid or refine and resubmit bids where they're previously unsuccessful. Our data cleansing and quarterly auditing is more reliable, and this is overseen by the newly-appointed SEN finance manager. All new personal budgets are audited within the first three months, per the regulations. However, in addition, the SEN finance team will now audit three existing personal budgets per month. Personal budget documentation is under review, including a personal budget information gathering template for parent carers to support them in linking their provision requesting to the outcomes in the child's D H C P. An easy-reap personal budget policy is in development, and we are working with procurement colleagues and redesigning the signup process to reduce duplication, streamline the process and create time efficiencies. All management actions, Part One, which is outside the locus control of the SEN team, are either business as usual or in development. We recognise the need for clear and concise information on the streamlined processes so parent carers can plan provision for their child or young person without the concern of services ceasing due to payment concerns or issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, just following, throwing open to questions. I just want to raise something, because we did have a couple of public forum questions from people who couldn't be here, and as a parent of a SEN child myself, I appreciate that, you know, getting to meetings like this isn't always easy. So, I just wanted to raise... So I just wanted to raise the issue of the language that we used in this report to do with refusing and forcing, we use it to use a different spar. And I just wanted to sort of say, can we, I know that, you know, we've had difficulties in this area with communication with parents and that kind of thing in the past as a council. Can we just please be aware of that? And I wonder whether we might be able to just rework that sentence in the report before, you know, when we know this, if we could maybe look at that?
Absolutely, I completely acknowledge that. The language used was really clumsy and I did address that within my additional questions and I have said, and I stated again, the parent carer is not at fault in trying to obtain the best possible provision or service for their child or young person. So yes, and we'll be mindful of language in the future. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Questions? I've got Nick and then Tom and then Rob.
Thank you for that reassuring report. Of course, everyone wants to know what the one action that isn't working is because that's audit. My guess is that it's, is it the Contraq issue to be trying to shoemore this process into a procurement framework that isn't working for it? And so the best outcome that we've got is to not use any framework at all. And that's probably not a question to the SEN team rather than our finance team about what do we do in those circumstances? And if, how is it that the answer to it doesn't fit perfectly with what we need to do procurement-wise is that, well, we just don't have anything in that case?
Anybody else to have a go at something?
I have a go, Chair.
Thank you, Tony.
Not sure of the specifics in relation to why the department hasn't been able to move forward at pace which obviously they intend to spark the management action phase. But in relation to ensuring that the council's financial systems are fit for purpose and deliver to meet the council's statutory duties in these areas, obviously we looked at to utilise the most appropriate systems. However, if there isn't a system which we can actually access in such a way that it meets all our requirements, then we do put checks and balances around the system in order so that almost the reconciliation or the work is done outside of the system. Obviously, it's much more efficient and effective if we can get a system to do everything that we need to do, but when we see those gaps and that's, that still implies a risk to the council and we always have that mis mitigation, there's a secondary system or a sort of work round in order to mitigate those risks. So it's not that we don't do it, we don't do the work, it doesn't work, therefore we can't, because obviously we're trying to meet the service need, but at the same time, we need to find natural risks.
Thank you. I think that is the main gap in what I see some of your comments on the back, I've been confirming, maybe there's a more concrete, yes, maybe there's something that can answer more specifically. So page thirty-two, it is the first bullet point there, if you're aware, or perhaps I'll just take a reassurance that this is going to be talked about a little bit.
Can I answer for the SEN team? So we absolutely recognise that funding module is required for the SEN payments, it's a busy area of the SEN team and we were discussed about the Contraq project, but does this require revisiting this requirement, which we will do later in the year or early next year? So it's not saying it won't happen, it's just saying right now, and we need to kind of revisit that requirement, especially when we need to ship into the council in our directorate. So I think it's a conversation that will ongoing and it's not something that's just been shut out, it will be picked up again.
Tom?
So a bit concerning about some of this, but it looks like there's a lot of really good progress, which is great. Dory's spoken a bit about the language used in refusing suppliers, forcing use of different suppliers, et cetera. So I won't get into the language, but I was curious what would the general or the most common reasons for refusal? Were there issues that were happening in the service? Is there a particular provision where we could perhaps do something a bit differently? You know, just what was typically the cause of refusing suppliers and is there anything we can do to perhaps amend that?
So I think in terms of the language refusing suppliers, I think that's a difficult one. I mean, in terms of the actual statement, it was the language not included in my report, so I didn't actually state that sentence. That was, that was obviously part of meetings with internal audit and the way that they obviously captured that, so just to state that. Can you just repeat the last bit of your question, please?
Yes, so something, you know, what a, causing cycle language, so I apologize, but, you know, if parents are choosing to go with different providers, let's say it like that, what were the typical reasons? Why is there anything we could do to improve our provision to accommodate more, to accommodate them better?
Absolutely, and I did address that in my additional questions. Typically, the, you know, parents will require a range of supplies and maybe that the frameworks that we have don't have the services to meet their child's needs on those frameworks, which we've talked about market engagement, which I am to encourage providers onto those frameworks so parents do have a plethora of services and suppliers to choose from. That's not the case at the moment, we appreciate that. It also may be that in prior, that parents may have used a service prior to statutory and they may feel that they've got a trusted supplier or a trusted therapist or mentor and they may opt to engage with them again, which is absolutely understandable. What we have been doing is targeting our communications and strategic commissioning to, for those contractors, for those suppliers we have contracted with that overall framework, we target our communications to them in terms of market engagement. So it's about us trying to encourage those frameworks, the growth of those frameworks to ensure that parent carers do have a plethora of suppliers on there to choose from.
Okay, thank you. So my question is also about Contraq versus A W, because the outcome here is treating self-employed tutors as if they're small businesses and we need to avoid those kind of operational delays falling on the individual. I actually think the solution is the Contraq module, so I would like to see maybe a report or a summary of the next meeting or the meeting after to see whether that has been identified and what a feasible timescale would be. I don't want only to suggest what that timescale would be then, because I suspect there are other things in your mind at the moment, but I would like to know whether that's been, that's possible. And if that is possible, it would also be good to know what the average delays are at this point up. So if you're coming back to the next meeting or the meeting after to say, is that module possible? Could you also report on what the average delay of paying to tutors has been in that period?
So I'm sure we can do that. I think that it's just worth saying that there's, I mean, I think it is helpful to have a specific conversation about the Contraq position broadly across the council, which as you can see this is part of and there is wider discussion, isn't there, about when and how we move into a different system. So I suppose I just wanted to separate that out, very happy to bring an update on Contraq, very happy to update in terms of the actions set out here, and I think we should probably do both of those separately, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm actively not trying to presuppose what the answer should be, even though I might have an idea about it. Though it is always important to buy time to do procurement properly. Absolutely right, we're all on board about it. It's just that we want to know that those issues are being considered and if there is a, if there is a option, what's the time, what's the feasible timescale for doing so? But thank you.
Tony, you want to go?
Chair, if I could, there is a corporate working group looking at this because as Hannah says, it cuts across a number of systems. Obviously, we need to ensure that we have the correct controls in place in order to meet our financial property elements, but also our procurement requirements. So it is being looked at, Chair, and then obviously part of the work of our group will be to bring forward a solution.
Thank you, Tony. So we do have another item on the agenda which is related to this, which is the deep dive into risk of children placed in unregistered provision. I'm just thinking while officers are here, whether the committee minds if we shift on to that, would that be okay? I appreciate that you've asked some questions on this, so, you know, does anybody want to go again on this? Yeah, anybody got any questions that weren't asked last time? David?
So this is more to do with the deep dive on CR fifty-five, which I assume we're going to have postponed later in the agenda. So I know that there is a wish to increase the capacity that we have to cope with placing children from fourteen to thirty-six. How realistic is that increase in capacity given the budgetary issues that we have at the moment? And also given our current experience that the two new homes that are going in in Lockley is providing capacity for just two children? How are we actually going to fulfil that, please?
Yeah, there is a mandate already in place to increase capacity for some of our children's homes, so we've had a re-profile of our children's homes already that is increasing capacity. The two houses in Lockleys are specifically for children who display these behaviours and complex needs around their trauma. So although they're for one child, many of these children are required, are needing to be placed on their own because of their needs and so that will be significant for us. If we have certain children currently in unregistered and we can care for two of them in each of those homes, that would be significant for us. So all those plans are in place, they all have mandates attached to them and they are going through committee to ensure they're in place, some of them already in place. So it is realistic.
So we do have the budget to deliver those eighty-four places?
I'd have to come back about how many are actually confirmed now and how many are in the mandate that are coming through. I can come back on that because some of them are already approved and are coming through.
If that could be able to be answered, please, Chair?
Yeah, certainly. So would anyone else like to ask any additional questions on this issue? No, I think we've probably covered that. Simba said, if you want to move on, so you want to... That's my fault, yeah, I'll go back to them. So the, for the deep dive, CR fifty-five, risk of children placed in unregistered provision, which is unawful, we're asked to note the comments of this report. So can I ask the committee, we're happy to note those comments? Okay, noted.
Okay, the third order summary is around the... Sorry, pardon. So there's a proposal section in this report, but this report is not to this committee, so it's some other committee is judging that proposal as and implementing it, I would guess.
So Chair, I think I'd agree to making decisions, but I think in this case, you would ask the report to come to you to give you assurance on now that it's been mitigated, the best you can do is to know what has been presented to you unless there's something, unless you're asking, I don't know, then you can go on to make another different recommendation. But in this case, if you are here, then you have to put the recommendation, it's not seen required, but to know the assurance of perfection.
Right, so if it's not a decision report, well, it's written a lot like a decision report, so has this been cut and pasted over from a decision report that went to say the children's committee for them? Has that happened yet or is this a sort of a preview of it?
I think this is the standard term that is used for committee reports. Yeah, but it is, we need to be very clear that there is no decision. I think the council give you new sufficient information to help you to understand the context of the risk. That's why I think that format, because if you give a different format, I think it's too strong with whether, of course, the risks associated with the decision, with the conversation here. But I must stress, there is no decision required in this case, but the report is written in that context to maintain consistency and give the committee sufficient information to make your judgements.
Okay, so carry on.
Okay, the third audit summary is all about record management service, ending three. The records management service is a very small team which acts as custodian and librarian in terms of the council's written documents that it needs or choose in the past and needs to retain. We took a review of the team's activity, we found that the team was not very well-served in terms of accommodation, which they had available for the safekeeping of the records, but also that they weren't really being well-served by their customers, also in terms of the different services who were trusting records to them and also where they took those records back out then. The record keeping largely by the borrowing services left something to be desired. So we reported a number of these issues back through. I think a colleague is available to respond on behalf of the service.
Brilliant, hello, Ben Pickin, Head of the Information Management Service. So just a few comments on this one from me. So a lot of the, so three of the five recommendations relate to information around the storage of those records. So currently, we use an old access database to log details around those records that are being kept. For some of you, maybe where that's obviously incredibly outdated, so one of the things we are looking at doing is, we've begun doing, implementing a new cloud-based record management software that will allow us to keep better track of those records who they're assigned to. It links in with our council active directory, so we're also going to have automated emails to those remasters so they know when they've got a review of the retention period coming up for renewal or a reminder, you've got a record out on loan, they need to return back to us and also allow us to keep close track of who has actually requested those records in the first place. So I think that new piece of software will address three of the five key areas. The other two, the ones already been alluded to, which is the environmental kind of physical conditions. So those aren't, these records are stored over an A and B bond, which again, very old buildings in quite some state of disrepair. So I'm engaging with our colleagues in corporate management around what needs to be done with those buildings to put them into a state where we can continue to use them, kind of irrespective of what the long-term plans are for those buildings, if we have a need for them at the moment, they need to be kind of be kept fit for purpose. And then finally, the one was around access to those buildings and the floors where those are stored. So that was already been done, we've worked with our colleagues who manage the access to those floors, those buildings to reduce the number of people that have access. So one of those sides has already been done and the rest, I'm confident they are all in hand and making progress. So I have these two questions.
Okay, so any questions about the audit finding or the management response? Look, David and Rob and Patrick.
Thank you, Chair, and hello, Ben. I'm gratified you said the words active directory to me because that's very reassuring. Not so reassuring you mentioned access, but still, that's never here nor there. You, the gentleman over there mentioned a small team of thirty-one needing legitimate access to this system, so that's not really quite a small team, is it? I just wondered how many people did have access to the records management area before it was all locked down?
So the finding itself is in relation to access to the system, is in relation to access to the various floors, so some of those floors are shared. So modern records would have part of the floor and archives might have access because they've got something stored on another part of the floor. So I think in total, I think there's around three hundred people that have been added over time, but that's obviously... But that's obviously definitely kept up to date. So there's a, not only we now rectify that, there's now a new process in place that ensures if we get added, that that has gone through development. Teams in my modern records team will have sign off of whether that person gets added to the record or to the access, or whether it's a temporary kind of access.
Thank you. Does the system use these cards or does it use another system?
Yes, it's all to do with the elevators in A and B bond. So yes, the same access cards managed by obviously the rest of the staff.
That's great, thank you.
The second bullet point of the management response says that the modern records team manager has taken responsibility for coordinating access and decisions around A bond because in lieu of building safety manager or appropriate building practice managers stepping forward, that doesn't seem like a very sustainable response. So is there an identified property leave for A bond? Are they doing that?
Very good point. So yes, that has recently been changed now. So that we have bi-monthly meetings with colleagues in Corporate Landlord. And that has now been identified that an individual from Corporate Landlord has taken over access to funds to maintain them identified.
And it's a name of...
It is, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Rob actually preempted one of my questions there. The bond buildings, both of my awards, I take particular interest in them. So I know we're talking about the support condition of some of these buildings. But you might be probably aware, the long-term future, we've got a master plan on the go for the Weston Harbour project, which incorporates both of those buildings. Have you been having discussions or do you feel you've got good access to that master planning team to make sure you've got continuity of premises?
Exactly that. So we have a bi-monthly meeting with colleagues in Corporate Landlord who obviously part of that master plan. But then there's also a monthly meeting where we speak directly to those people who are involved in the funding that happened with the Weston Harbour piece. Like you said, one of the main considerations from a client perspective is if they're going to be the numbers, where is everything going to go that we're currently using in that? So yeah, those conversations are happening. And there is a recognition that it's not going to be a short-term piece of work to relocate all those things.
Well, thank you. In the meeting I had about the, with master plans last week, I think there was an acknowledgement that possibly the archives would be able to stay in the bond buildings. In the future, though, obviously the buildings themselves need structural changes. And I say, as the ward councillor, if you ever have issues with this and want more, another part of content with master plans, please do reach out to me.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And David, is it quick on?
I think so, yes. On the second to last bullet point, you talk about records with no review date or a date over 50 years. How many documents are we talking about that you might have to consider?
Off the top of my head, I can't comment. I can get that information to you. And I'm sure you can appreciate some of the records we have to keep indefinitely as well. So it won't be a small number.
Okay, I think we're happy to move on from that. Oh, Abdul.
Chair, the report talks about health and safety of staff. I'm just wondering if you can reassure us about safeguarding of staff and the health and safety in the storage sites?
So that's paramount. So that one of those key individuals involved is from health and safety. So one of the short-term actions we're looking at is obviously implementing things that ensure the health of all the staff working in, mainly A bond, where the health and safety bits are of more consideration. B bond is in better condition. Yeah, that is definitely top line.
Okay, so this is the last of the limited assurances. Yeah, and then we've got one no assurance. Yes.
Okay, the fourth audit summary is savings delivery. The committee will be aware of the environment in which the council's operating and that we have a savings programme in place annually. We reviewed the council's achievements against the savings targets and the processes in place to help those savings be achieved. We found some good processes in place. Delivery executives have been established to oversee that process and there was some finance oversight and some guidance had been produced by the individual directorates. And it is ultimately the directorate's responsibility to deliver those savings. Looking at achievement, we found that last year, some 67% of savings had been achieved. This was actually the highest figure for some five years. And quite a bit of those savings were only declared as not being achieved very late in the process in the year. So the savings programme continues to be vital to the council's finances. We provided a limited assurance opinion. So I'll hand over to Tony, I think, to respond.
Thank you, Chair. So obviously, the council savings process is fundamental to council sustaining its financial sustainability. And what the report does say is that our performance quite a significant period of time has been less than optimum. One of the reasons which pins that is the budget process. Officers have felt that in the past. The budget process has been condensed into the back end of the year. So we've taken the action of bringing forward the budget process when we've now started that process with officers and will work its way through the Finance Subcommittee and the policy committees. But one of the key elements of this is is to give officers sufficient time to work through the delivery plans and to mitigate the risks in relation to the delivery of those savings. So that's one of the positive actions which we've taken. I think as Philip suggested, I think the council's monitoring and management of this process significantly increased over the last 12 months. And we're hopeful that that will have a positive impact on the overall delivery. So moving forward, hopefully there'll be a savings delivery figure which is more realistic. One of the things which we need to consider when looking at the performance is that the council has built in an optimum bias piece in reflection to previous year's delivery, which means that there is a provision set to one side based on an assumption that they'll allow you part-year delivery. So in relation to taking into account in the current financial year, that optimum bias provision, the council would be looking at an in-year group savings delivery of around 75 to 80%. We're currently tracking it at around 67% in relation to P2. However, we continue to work with the departments in order to alleviate any of the risks and hurdles in place. And the council has invested significant sums through its transformation programme in some of the key programmes. So in the short period of time I've been here, I do believe we have started to improve our chances of savings delivery. But obviously, the in-year savings in the current financial year still have a legacy issue of the condensed budget process at the back end of last year. But we are working with the departments to mitigate that. If you did look at the actual report, which we only signed on several weeks ago, the senior responsible officer moving forward for the delivery of savings is the chief exec. But I think that shows the commitment. So rather than this being seen as a finance report, it's actually seen as a report which is key to the executive in relation to its delivery. So I'll leave my summary there, Chair, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, just a reminder to keep our questions focused on what the internal audit findings were and the management response. Obviously, you know, we know there's a lot of debate about savings and whether they should be made or why they have to be made. But yeah, if we could focus on that, that would be great. Does anybody want to kick us off? Abdul?
Just, of course, well, thank you, Tony. And obviously, we'll work together to come up with a plan for some of this stuff. But I think I want to ask the obvious here. How will the council ensure that saving plans are, I suppose, realistic? They're approved and they're effectively monitored by members of the council to obviously achieve those targets that are set out. But also, I suppose, a second question as well. What changes are being made to the budget process to prevent a more optimistic and achievable table forecast?
Back up on that, Chair. Obviously, in relation to the monitoring of performance, S and R committee takes regular reports in relation to the council's overall financial delivery against the budget. Savings is obviously a key area. That's a very specific element in relation to that. And then that goes on to various different policy committees. We also have a number of internal mechanisms, including the executive looking at those savings. The savings were approved as part of the budget process and have been in previous years. But that hasn't helped in relation to the level of delivery which we would see as efficient and effective. I think in part, the mechanism of having the optimum bias as a general provision against the wide range of savings isn't as helpful as actually, which is what we will do in relation to developing next year's financial year, is looking at each of those individual savings and looking at the timeline for the delivery. So the savings which you approved at council, there is an underlying assumption that they will deliver full year effect. Whereas we know, by the nature of some of these things, there is a timeline in relation to the delivery aspect. So in building the five, six budget, what we will do is put in a part-year effect based on the delivery mechanisms in place and the risks around those, rather than what is like a general contingency over the top for those who don't sort of progress at pace which they should do. And therefore, I think we've got a much more realistic plan in relation to each of the individual proposals, rather than what we have at the moment, which is more of a contingent collective approach.
So I'll come to Cara in a second. I've just got one question to ask myself if that's on. In regard to savings that were reported as safe and weren't looked at by finances or the audit findings, I'm reading that as meaning that we assume they were safe and therefore didn't look at them in enough detail to make sure that they were delivered. And then some of them turned out not to be safe. Obviously, it's hard to track exactly what the management actions, how they relate to the audit findings. I don't know if you could just talk about that, Ben?
I think, I wasn't here, Chair, so I don't have the lived experience. But from the review we've undertaken of what's worked well, what's not worked so well, I think there was a misunderstanding in relation to some of the reporting by the service departments, where they delivered a mitigation against the savings, which obviously all the departments are required to look to do in the first instance, where they can't deliver the savings, what can be mitigated. They include those mitigations as part of the delivery piece. So I think there was a definition issue there, which is why at the back end of the year, where we thought there were more savings that were going to be delivered, actually that figure diminished and it was partly to do with the mitigation piece within it. In relation to the in-year checking challenge, that is very robust now. And particularly in relation to the key transformation programmes, there was a lot of energy put into that process and there is a lot of independent challenge away from the departments through the support of the project management office. So I think there is some real constructive conversation there. And it's not just somebody saying, yes, I believe I can do it. There is a solid checking charge in that process. So again, I think that will help us improve as that in best.
Okay, thank you. Cara?
I'm actually really alarmed by what I'm reading in 1.5. I said 1.5 in this. 67% of savings were delivered by high-grade delivery for five years. However, this exceeded the margin allowed by the optimum bias. So maybe if you could explain to me more how we can say those savings were delivered, but we're also saying they exceeded the margin allowed by optimum bias. How can those two things be true?
So the optimum bias is quite a Bristol-centric approach. So I can understand it's not that easy to explain. So in reality, there's a corporate provision held centrally at the beginning of the year, which basically says that we don't believe we will deliver all of the savings as set out. And as a result, there is a sum held to one side. So what that point is actually saying is the sum held to one side was insufficient in order to meet the gap between the savings included and the savings actual delivery. So therefore, there was a requirement to mitigate some of those savings in year beyond the corporate piece. Does that help?
But does that mean 67% of savings were delivered or not?
Yes, 67% of last year's savings were delivered in year.
And leaving us in a position where we need a saving delivery rate of 77.4% in the coming year?
What that's saying in relation to the current financial year, because of the size and scale of the optimum bias that's been built in, only 77% in year needs to be delivered to balance the overall position.
Thank you.
Nick and David?
So two points then, I suppose, building on that. I wasn't quite clear from the narrative if our improvement in delivery of savings, which is great, also aligns with the implementation of that optimism bias and to see that they're not coming through. So if we've gone up from, say, meeting about 55% of the target, now we're meeting 67% of the target, that's really good. But is that just because the target was reduced by about 30% because we put our optimism bias adjustment on it? Do these two cancel out or am I misreading across that?
So the 67% is what we delivered against the 100% which we set out in the budget.
Yeah.
Partly that. So in relation to what that means for the council's act term, once you apply the optimum bias, then obviously that improves the overall position. 67% delivery of savings isn't great. Better than previous five, apparently? Well, it was only better by 3%. And it's been as low as 29%. So I think it's fair to say, and this is reflected in the annual governance statement, and will be something which our external auditors review in relation to our value for money assessment. We do need to significantly improve that. A mature organisation would be looking at delivering 95% of savings in year as per set out as part of the process. And I think part of that is actually being realistic in relation to the full year effect of those savings in year. So we, as I said, we've run a system in the past which is actually, in my view, built in an assumption of non-delivery. And I think moving forward from a cultural point of view, we need to strip that back and be realistic so that we have clear ownership and clear delivery in year.
Thanks. The second point relates a bit more about the audit itself. When we're talking about the delivery of savings, it's not like we're talking about children allocated to emergency accommodation, because in that instance, they've either been found to bed for the night or they haven't. Whereas a saving can be delivered in full or in part, or even at all. So I think we've got two different things and I can't really work out where we're going. When we say a saving marked as safe, for example, is that 30% of the lines in the budget were marked as safe? It's not 30% of the sum total? And I think that ambiguity pops up a couple of times. So as an audit, do we sort of audit on a per-budget line basis? Has this been achieved? Was it safe? Did any... Did anyone actually look into it? Or is it audited as a whole? Did we deliver across the entirety of the pounds amount?
Okay, the savings targets are different from the overall budget monitoring process. As the savings do get factored into that, so you do need to look slightly differently. And there is a sort of different mechanism for monitoring the savings. So there is a board which was previously called Delivery Executive, which I think was previously chaired by Count Lachini, which looks specifically at the savings and called in various officers who are responsible for delivering those savings, held them to account and so on. There is a different mechanism for monitoring the budget. And that wasn't specifically within the scope of that review, but there is a process now by which monthly accounts are prepared, exception reports and so on there. And then that gets reported through to the corporate leadership board and through to the new committee structures as well.
Okay, so when we're doing a process of audit, I'm guessing that savings have been identified by the department, so say there's 100 of them, they're in a row, you go through line by line, on track to be delivered or not, as have been checked. So when you're auditing, are you going, as a proportion of the rows, this is how many have been delivered? Or is it easier to just look at the overall sum? We were hoping to save 100 million, we saved 67 million.
No, I'll take that. So remember that Fucan got proof that the MTF, in thinking that there's a list of all the approved sets of plan, that's our starting point. So we know how much needs to be achieved and we know what needs to be done. So we won't be able to test everything, but we select a sample of those lines and test them. But also remember that there's regular reporting that goes, so probably quarterly you get a report that shows that what savings have been delivered, we follow them through. So we test, we don't just look at the delivery, just the overall, but we look at the individuals. So we might sample probably 15 or so of them and then follow them through from, we want to see the saving plan, that's why there's a question here, but there were some saving that noted delivered plan. So you might have a saving, say we're going to do this to achieve 2 million, but the next step for you now to say the out part, how are you going to deliver that? In some cases, we're going to plan, we're going to do one, two, three, four, five, and they do the cross-eyed, so which we send that sent out to the end of it. So yeah, it's a mixture of, yes, we look at other reports, but also a sample of the savings.
Sorry, I'm not yet articulated well. I think that maybe for the next report, we'll get to what the director was saying, if 67% delivery, does that mean that every single row has overestimated by 50%? Or does that mean that certain departments are really bad at estimating? I think that's what next year would make this report a bit more interesting.
I think we need to recognise that it's good that the committee is making, will make comments on each report, but it's not possible that we'll be able to do what needs to be done. I think we're doing a saving reporting here. So a saving reporting means that we are reporting to the committee the high level of things that the committee needs to focus on, otherwise they don't want to see the comments that are able to do everything. The key element is that the 67% reflects the amount, so the budget amount is fixed. If you have 23 million, did we deliver 70? That's the starting point. Then there will be savings that will be delivered 100%. So there will be some lines which are delivered 100%, and then there will be some that are probably 57%, some 80%, some 90%. So this figure is not just, you cannot say it reflects the individual lines. So in simple terms, there will be some that, which have been delivered and some exceeded that, there will be some that have exceeded the planned budget. But in theory, at the end of the day, the question is that we are only delivering 67%. That's the question. But it's inevitable that the delivery will be different regardless, given different circumstances. But what I'm just emphasising is that there's something that I'll be able to take forward, but there are some that I won't be at our level of detail, but will be too much again, then inside the committee.
I think we hear what's him saying there. David, do you have a question or can we move on? I think we need to get cracking on the last one.
Thank you, Chair. I'm interested in this use of the phrase optimism bias. It seems to be a bit of a woolly phrase for an accurate reporting financial document. So does this mean that you had a bias that allowed you to miss your target or overachieve your target in terms of the bias?
Thank you, Chair. As I say, it's quite a Bristol centric approach in my sort of judgment.
By that, do you mean this is the only council that uses optimism bias?
This is the only council I've come across which has used that type of phraseology and have just had this type of approach to the budget setting. I'm not saying others have it in the past, but I think the intention, as I read it, is to suggest that there is an underlying principle that officers will be more optimistic in relation to their delivery than they actually will achieve. So therefore, a provision to cater for the fact that that optimism is within the figures at the start of the process and obviously in relation to the delivery, it would then start to fall out. So that's my understanding of the principle of what it was trying to achieve. But from my point of view, from a financial management point, it's better to go line by line in relation to each of the individual items and look at them in relation to their actual delivery and the risks around those. And then build into the forecast that those figures, I'm not saying that doesn't mean you still, it might be at some level of contingency within the system that tends to be held within your own EMA reserves in relation to overall delivery piece. So I think in change, in moving forward, working with the finance subcommittee and the committees etc., I would like to rebase the language in relation to how we move this forward, get what we actually believe savings are going to deliver in five, six, seven, eight, and then monitor against those in relation to the individual, rather than have this overall contingent approach.
So will the removal of the word optimism bias be added to the management response to this report?
Moving forward, obviously we'll agree the budget process is as part of the next few months' development. That would be my proposal, but obviously it's only my proposal and there are obviously different ways of doing this. I think what I would say though is the model which we've had in Bristol hasn't been as successful as the model I think we need going forward.
Okay, I think we know what everybody's saying there. Okay, can we move on to the last one? This is one with no confidence. Sorry, Chair. I think we need to get cracking or we're not going to get through everything that's on the agenda.
I think this is a very important subject, I'd like to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Just on a couple of points that Tony made, and one of them was that there is obviously the 67% we're talking about now, but previously it's been nearly half of that. And can we just maybe very briefly elaborate on that? But also, you mentioned there was a culture of non-compliance or little intent in achieving savings? A culture that, did you say that? Did I hear that right? If that's so, then can you elaborate on that please? Thanks.
Sorry, Count, I'm going.
Could you repeat the second question? You got not sure I heard you correctly. So if I heard you correct, you said the culture of non-compliance was kind of embedded within the organisation?
So if you look at the actual report produced by the auditors, the sort of low in relation to performance was 2021, where we delivered 29% savings per set out, which obviously 2021, probably there was some expected backs in relation to that delivery. So you might argue that's probably not normal. But if you look at the performance in other years, 6% to 70% is broadly where we sit. And as I say, a mature organisation would love to be in the 95-plus level of savings. I think the model of having a contingent item, which is quite a significant item, which almost, as we said, have in the current financial year, actually assumes 80% of their amounts delivered. I don't think that helps focus officers in relation to their actual ownership of some of those individual lines, because it's known as a corporate provision which could bail out. So in relation to the cultural piece, I think there's much more value in being very specific about what we feel we can achieve in year and therefore have the ownership of these responsible officers in relation to delivery of that, rather than a situation where we have years and years of experience where we've not delivered and therefore corporately that's been bailed out. So I think moving forward, it would be helpful to address that potential situation.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, the last summary to look at is the one on cash impressed accounts or cash flows. The council holds a variety of impressed accounts for various purposes, which range from tea and biscuits up to making statutory payments for those in need. And the great majority of payments that are made are payments to those in need. In terms of amount that goes through, it's actually paid out in cash, we estimated that to be around 1.8 million in total. I've sort of stated those figures fairly vaguely, because one of the key findings of the report was that there was no master list of imprests held within the council and also that there was no overarching guidance which had been produced, which told the people who are responsible for administering the imprests how to use them. We then went down and did some more detailed testing into the operation of some of these accounts and found that some of the custody arrangements were inappropriate and some of the distribution of the money, the way in which that was also given out, also appeared to be inappropriate. There were some themes coming out of that, one of which was a lack of administrative resource in terms of looking after these accounts. Also, we found there was some evidence of using the cash to bypass some of the council We raised a number of issues relating to our findings, which should be taken forward by management. There is also a sort of underlying theme behind this, which was actually within the scope of the review which came out, which was that it appears that the council is using cash for things it doesn't need to use cash for. There are other more secure methods of dispersing the funding. It's important to say that we didn't come across any actual incidences of fraud while we were undertaking our work, but the risk of fraud error is there. And there's also a sort of risk that the staff are involved in these processes, if the proper systems and controls are in place to protect them against unwarranted allegations. So I think colleagues here from the finance team to respond.
Yes, hello, I'm Richard, Head of Finance, I'll respond to the report. The no assurance, it's very much my intention to take that no assurance report into full assurance for a committee by August, by the end of August. We've already started on the actions that are needed in response to the report. There are 180 petty cash accounts on my record identified by corporate finance. The total value of those balances are 251,000. We will provide a new revised policy, it's substantially drafted, it's going to incorporate all the relevant recommendations from the internal audit report. We'll move to a position where we would like petty cash to be replaced as quickly as possible by non-cash alternatives where we can. We've immediately gone to senior internal officer teams to provide instructions on our intention to update the policy and provide guidance on the accounting arrangements for petty cash. Corporate finance will be issuing this revised guidance for detailed management of petty cash accounts. We'll be asking whether they're already, but we will be reinforcing them, reestablishing and bringing them back for all council directorates to be responsible to. Account holders will be responsible for completing regular reconciliations and report any discrepancies. If there are discrepancies that are expected, we would immediately refer them to internal audit. We would have corporate finance overview, recommendation in the report is that they need to be identified, responsible overview within finance and that's within my team to be identified. And we will have wide reaching and comprehensive communication to ensure awareness of the revised policy and guidance. Year-end reconciliations of petty cash accounts are being carried out, they have been carried out to the year end. The majority of account holders provide returns in their year-end certificates. We are through our communication board directorate and so this is getting a clear fix on those numbers and what might not have come through. And we will also establish the extent to which those petty cash accounts are necessary and whether we can provide the relevant alternatives through procurement channels. Account holders must on existing petty cash accounts provide a strong case for their continuance to make. We will check if any are dormant, the new accounts will only be created through a business case signed off by our section 1.1 officer. I do wish to understand more about emergency claims, particularly the most vulnerable, but I want to move away from cash and go back, as I say, to the channels that are alternative to do procurement and through cash. That's my response.
Thank you, Richard. I do think this is a good example of, you know, how valuable internal audit is to the council to come up with this finding. And it also sounds like Richard and the team are taking this very seriously. So questions? All right, I've got Jonathan and then Simon and then Ron.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I'm quite surprised that something as simple and straightforward as impressed account management should be given no assurance, because running such a system effectively is common sense really. Although perhaps I shouldn't be that surprised, because I think it was in January of this year that we received an internal audit report relating to impressed account management, specifically within the refugee resettlement team. And that report was given no assurance as well. In response to that, the then section 1.1 officer said, I wouldn't want people to anticipate that this is a common occurrence. It isn't. So my question is, was this wider audit of impressed account management in response to that finding? Or would this audit have been carried out anyway? And did this audit include refugee resettlement team within its scope? And if it did, were it proven? And if it did, were improvements identified during the audit?
So I must done this particular audit as a wide majoring all council context. And I haven't got a link to being referenced to that original report. It is now for me to get the assurance across all the petty cash accounts. I agree with you, something as simple as petty cash and reimbursement of those accounts should be straightforward. That requires, I think, some simple communication and training across to account holders to get those routines clear. There are from the findings that I've seen within the report, a number of accounts that are higher value. Most of the accounts are of the expected, much lower value, the two hundred and fifty pounds or fifty pounds for the very small incidental expenses. That's what I would expect. And for those accounts that are much higher and they need to be resolved and are seeing a share or a throughput of expenditure which is higher than expected, particularly maybe in the refugee or services or in children's and education, we need to bring those back into our procurement processes or non-cash alternatives. But they will be taken into account and certainly resolved if there are problems before.
Simon?
Thank you, Chair. Given the report has had no assurance and council had referred to the previous report as well, but given we've heard and seen a comprehensive set of actions to try and address those points and to address them quickly, just wonder how quickly internal audit will go back and look at this because I think it would be good to get assurance quite quickly that these actions have been implemented and that they are working.
I think we'll be able to do some work before the end of the year, so probably something probably Q4. But I'm assured that some of the options have been taken. So yeah, I think probably Q4 will be up and update. Just as I said previously, just to give management a bit of time for us to test something that's working, that probably what I'd prefer, probably approach doing something in Q4.
Could I also add it on that that the first part of the challenge is to produce the guidance and then to roll that out. But it is the directors who are ultimately responsible for the way in which the money is dispersed. And there, I think that is where the challenge lies. So the directors haven't had the guidance beforehand. So they now need to review their practices and put in place more secure and practical means of making these payments, the great majority of which are clear, sort of statutory payments for people in need. And that is where the challenge is going to lie because those services are already reviewing their staffing and other things, looking at where they can make savings.
Thank you. Rob?
The safest way to handle cash is not to have it. And the same is true for cheque books. My only experience is if you ask people if they can manage without cash, they come up with lots of very plausible sounding solutions about why their service is so specific and you need, that they absolutely need it. Whereas if you give people a prepaid credit card of five hundred pounds and say you're not allowed to handle cash anymore, they just don't handle cash anymore. So when you bring your report back, would it be useful for you to report on how many of those cash accounts you've actually closed? Because I suspect you're enjoying all of them.
Yes, that solution is one of those. It's within the list of potential ways, alternatives that we can use less cash. And there is that plus we go through our banking framework to make sure that that can be workable. But there are a number of others, maybe vouchers, maybe our direct procurement agents. And looking at the way that council provides services to very vulnerable citizens, there are means, public services and provision benefits can be rooted that way. We just need to make sure that they're all in place. But I could also look at overall, as we reduce that use of cash, how much that will be.
Yeah, thank you. David, ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. We've got a figure of 1.8 million, which you said was vague. But do we have an idea of how many transactions have actually been processed in this way in terms of petty cash? And also, I noticed from the management responses, there's not one system which you would use to actually track all these transactions. Is there such a system in the council for actually tracking that many number of transactions?
I was looking at that question myself in response to the report. And as Phil has pointed out, that was just an estimate when I look at, I do have transactions for the total camp, I didn't get to the bottom of that. It's still something, but I think I have sufficient record to come to review. But I haven't been to that yet. In terms of system, I want to reduce the number of systems that have been used. But more specifically, I want to be clear about the controls and reconciliations with any of those systems and that they meet my requirements to a reconcilable account. So we can see all those transactions, be able to achieve that account. That count of transactions, reduce them and be sure exactly how they're all being processed.
So you do actually have the systems at the back end to actually monitor this level of transactions?
I'm working on making sure that that system is there, I can't give that hundred percent assurance, but that is what I'm intending.
So is that also going to go in management response that you're still looking at the backend systems? Because I think that needs to be noted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I've got one more question from Adapara. Oh, you didn't want to question? Okay, that's good. Yes, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we have two recommendations on this item. Audit committee notes the progress in the implementation of the agreed management actions. And the audit committee notes the five internal audit summary reports and takes assurance from senior management regarding the issues highlighted in these reports. So can I take it that we're happy with those two actions? Okay, thanks, everybody. That's been a really long and detailed report. I think we'll take a five minute break now, if that's all right. And start back here as close to four o'clock as we can and we'll see if we can't get the rest. I think we're a couple of moments short. I've got to make the decision to restart anyway. So item eleven on the agenda is the corporate risk report update. We have risk and insurance officer here to present this.
Good afternoon, my name is Rocky, I'm a senior risk insurance officer. First, I want to start by saying from the last meeting, there was a query about highlighting the need for risk as much as I like. So because the last time we came with this report, we just lost in between Q, Q4 and Q1. So we're led to emphasize that. But definitely going forward, I just wanted to lay that ahead so that given what I shared with Asher, I should back question Kim last time and I want to address that, I should add that for a minute. Because what we're going to be doing going forward is to try and highlight more evil risks as much as realized and the mitigations that are already in place to cause the remediation of that. Having said that, I'm assuming that we will send the risk report, I'm happy to go through it. We have for Q1, three critical risks, for ten higher risks, for below risk, two risks improving. I'm happy every quarter when I see improving risks because it shows that somehow the mitigations that colleagues are implementing from their self-assessments and from our assurance, they're able to see that some of those actions are being improved. And we look at of the three critical risks, we look at deep dive on CRR twenty five. Also CRR nine, we explained last time why that's been high because I suspect by Q2, we might see a reduction. But we just highlighted that because of what happened in the last few months. And then CRR sixteen, also being, became critical. That has asked a lot of extensive comprehensive action. And I'm aware that also different committees working on design to mitigate it in this as well. We have more risks that's written, I think that's also expected during the year in terms of financial management. Usually between Q1, Q1, Q2, the kind of, the section one five ones here, projecting what the financial plan will be, we start to be cautious in terms of predicting what the likely. But also what we've done is to look at the interconnectivity of some of the factors that might potentially be influencing some of these cautious standards we're taking in terms of our financial management as well. And we've escalated CRR sixty two, which is mostly, again, is not, it's not going to happen nor will it that potential grants a deficit by twenty six. Again, predicting, trying to prepare in advance and working with the colleagues and finance and to see what we can do in terms of mitigating that particular threat. Mitigation actions, we have ten new mitigation actions. Q1 in addition to the one we have. We hope that as we see the implementations of these new mitigations coming through. The reason why we highlight new mitigations because if risk is static or something, it's a bit, we challenge, say, okay, what else can we do in addition to what's been done before? So that challenge produced a set of actions. And as we monitor those actions, we hope that those actions, we can decide that they like being part of the trends. Also, you asked me a question about opportunities. We're starting encouraging colleagues to standardize opportunities. I'm very hopeful that perhaps by key to, who am I being to highlight some opportunities? But that's something we encourage colleagues to say, we have the opportunities, the things that potentially is serious that the finance boards talk about initiating now, help the council to advance the delivery objectives faster than as well. That's my overview quickly, if you have any questions, I'll have to answer.
Okay, thank you. I'm hoping we're not going to have to spend too long on this report because it has already come to strategic resources, which quite a few of us are on. And it will be going to other committees, I gather, going forward from now on. So a lot of people get to look at this. We've also included a deep dive on one of the items that's been a high risk for a long time. And we've looked at the savings as well. So quite a lot of it's covered, but I'll take a couple of questions from Nick and Patrick.
Well, for the reasons you've just mentioned, I was going to suggest we go straight to the vote. But if there's only one question, then why not?
Patrick, have you got a question that you really want to ask?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll, I'll have to backhand it as well. I have a couple of quick questions about our IT infrastructure and IT security. So I'm sure we all saw the cloud strike disruptions over the last several days. Was the council impacted at all by that, this? And do we have contingencies in place to help us get similar disruption in the future?
I'll come back to you on that. I think we have the response for the colleagues on the IT system. We had a conversation, they had this strategy for the business continuity regarding how we respond to downtime generally. But specifically in terms of what happened last week, I'm happy to give a more feedback to you.
Thank you. And one other thing which actually only occurred to me as I was sitting down here, I noticed, I think this probably fits under CRR seven potentially. I noticed our laptops have now featured Microsoft's Copilot generative AI assistant. Have we considered the security implications of this? It's my understanding, not from an expert perspective, but generative AI often shares the information it gathers with its central servers and then that goes into its database. So obviously if we, if someone asks it to summarize a confidential document, then Microsoft is now aware of that confidential document, for instance. So have we considered the security implications of this?
Counselor, that.
Just given how recent the findings for the social housing regulator were in terms of the crisis that the council finds itself in regarding disrepair of social housing, I wondered if the prediction of the financial risk now exits the five million pounds, actually that figure is low because we need to factor in this additional information.
Chair, we increased the risk based on the SNR report, which went last Monday, period two point, which showed that it is more than likely that the council would have a financial impact in year of more than five million. We will review again as we progress throughout the financial year in relation to potential impact of obviously managing, putting actions in place to mitigate those risks. But we believe at the point of time of evaluation, that was a reasonable assessment of the risk. But it could go up if the pressures continue.
Okay, thank you. So is everybody happy if we, well, we've reviewed and commented. Is everybody happy that we can move on? Okay, thank you. And the next item is revision of procurement and contract management rules.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Louisa Ferguson, head of procurement and contract management. And it's my colleague Matt King, who's my performance and governance manager. So we've given the papers around the new procurement rules, the public procurement laws change, which is named Procurement Act 2023. And as a result, the council needs to update its own procurement rules in advance of the changes which come into effect on October the 28th of this year. So the procurement and contract management service have been working hard to get ready for that change, which includes the review of these rules. There are also a number of working groups, training and guidance, which is in progress. Consultation has been included and that has included attendance at EDMs and ELMs, the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee's chair briefing, as well as colleagues internally with legal and finance and external reviews by the University of Bristol and Federation of Small Business. This item is that the audit committee to allow proposed changes to be reviewed, but also enable councillors to have prior vision to the decision that will be taken at full council in September 2024.
Okay, so bearing in mind, we also have an item on procurement compliance update coming next. Does anybody have any questions regarding this review? It's good to see a list of the actual changes. That was useful to see, even though I didn't understand most of them, to be fair. But any questions? Rob?
I think it's a great report. I think you've done a really good job of identifying the changes that are needed. I don't have any comments on the report itself. I have a slight comment on the financial implications of the covering fault of the bottom of page hundred and one. The financial advice is that this has no financial implications. That potentially might surprise me. The colleagues who are not blessed at working in procurement may not know that the changes in the procurement act are the most significant changes in procurement ever. And they do include a number of very significant increases in transparency and disclosure, with a very large increase in notices to be published. It wouldn't surprise me if the maintenance of those notices was more resource intensive than the situation you have now. So you shouldn't just looking at your director necessarily, rather than your, forgive me, manager. You shouldn't necessarily assume that you should be able to absorb those within the arrangements you've had before because it is definitely more admin, if not anything else. Also, from a legal point of view, the fact that we will have to publish contracts that are worth over five million and redact them before we do is something that we haven't done before and which will cause us a certain amount of pressure and tension. The first time you do that, you will definitely need legal support to do that because no one has redacted a contract in that way before and that is potentially not free. I also noticed in your process, the legal engagement is that you have potentially quite a low bar for legal involvement in a number of your contracts. So I think you said a legal officer has to be involved in everything that's above threshold and potentially every single decision to award a contract on supplier terms. Potentially that is even below threshold. I'm not sure if that's implication of that. So I suspect you have quite a lot of very low value contracts where you're engaging on supplier terms, if there isn't an alternative. In that case, you may be involved in quite a lot of repetitive legal. In that case, you may be involved in quite a lot of repetitive legal advice that you, I would expect a commercial officer to not necessarily need legal advice to make the appropriate decisions or the appropriate clauses there. So I'd ask you to look at that. The main thing is to say the implication in introduction of the new change is quite a big deal. And I'd want to hope that the procurement team will be supported to make those changes.
Yeah, thank you. We are viewing it as an organizational impact change. You're right, we've oversight, I think that's an oversight for them, there's no financial implications because there absolutely is. And the point around legal as well, absolutely, we're looking at processes to make sure they're involved in and maybe reviewing those thresholds as to where they're involved in maybe template contracts, which we don't have at the moment as well.
Abdul?
Chair, I'd just like to point to the, the impact assessments, both the qualitative and environmental impact assessments on there. Note that they've been ticked as no impact, so. In regard to quality, I believe that it's quite short sighted if we're saying that there is no impact on quality. Have we fully considered how the revision might affect local suppliers, particularly those owned by the black and minority ethic individuals and communities and companies and other minority groups? These businesses often face additional barriers and may require more inclusive procurement practices to ensure pay opportunity. And with regards to environmental impact, what measures have been included in revision to assess and mitigate the environmental impact of our procurement and contract management processes? It's crucial that we prioritize sustainability and support suppliers who demonstrate strong environmental practices. How are we ensuring that our procurement policies are aligned with our environmental goals? At last, we just like to say that the support for small businesses, small businesses are backbone of our local economy. How does this revision ensure that small businesses, which may not have the resources to compete with larger firms, are not disadvantaged? Are there specific provisions or support mechanisms included within the report to help and navigate and succeed in procurement for small businesses?
So forgive me if I don't pick up on all the points, so I may need to come back to you if I miss something, things out, so I suppose I'm sorry. So I think the quality impact assessment and the sustainability assessment are not reflecting that our procurement approach doesn't have a quality or environmental impact. It's that the change that we're talking about, which is what this report is about, don't necessarily have a significant change on the quality and sustainability. The reason we say that is that the, the policies on, on our approach to social value, to small and medium sized businesses and to social value and sustainability are all set up separately. So we have, and they will be, they will continue. So we have the procurement contact management strategy, for example, for the four years strategy, which talks, which sets out our approach to inclusion around diverse supplier, increasing the diversity of our supplier base and our, and the other approach to SMEs. Similarly, social value policy sets our approach to social value more generally, but also including small and medium sized businesses. And then the healthy and sustainable procurement policy similarly is not changing as part of this change. And that again sets out our approach to sustainability within our procurement processes. And I may have missed out elements of your question, so apologies.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a look at the section 13, can I try to look at this? There's existing rules and there's.
I'm explaining, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So there's the existing rules and there's the explanation for change. If you have a look at the grid and you look at number 13, what you'll see is there's a reward. It says here reworded for parity, including supplier diversity as a factor to promote the supplier base, where it represents the state of the city. Right, further down, I don't want to read that whole thing, but obviously this is to do with equalities and diversity. So taking yes in the box and making sure that we cater for that would probably make more sense. To do a quality impact assessment on that, on that particular.
So I understand where you're coming from, maybe I'll have a look at it. I think from the rationale was that the things that we set out, the wording that we've tweaked in the rules and cells are reflecting the strategy that we already adopted and the strategy remains consistent. So I think the, the reason we view this as not being changed is that we already have the strategy and social value policies and so saying version policy stepping out our approach. And then the tweaks to the wording of the procurement rules was basically reflecting that. So I think that was the, that was the logic of suggesting there wasn't necessarily a significant change due to this document. Not that there isn't, as I say, there isn't a, there is, there are definitely implications of procurement, our procurement approach to all the things that we, that we've talked about.
I think that's important to, you know, to be quite visible. So I think that maybe the quality impact assessment, especially Mr. Joe. Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, so this report was brought for the committee to review and comment on the papers, so I think we've done that. Everybody's happy with that, we can move on to item 13, which is procurement compliance update.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So this paper has been submitted in response to procurement breaches. And I think it's important to just highlight what a procurement breach is and just remind everyone in case there are new ones here that aren't aware. So when procuring a new contract or amending an existing contract, the council's own internal procurement rule sets out that the process has to be defined, so that's the route to market or the procurement route. And secondly, who needs to give that prior authorization due to the value? So if any of those two things don't happen, that then results in a procurement breach. And that could be one or both of those elements haven't been followed. So the number of procurement breaches in previous years has been identified as a significant weakness by Grant Thornton in the report in July 2023. And in the financial year of 2223, there were 341 breaches, which equated to 16% of the procurement decisions made in that year. And as a result, the council's corporate leadership board made procurement compliance a priority. And the paper summarizes a number of the management actions that have been put in place to reduce the breach numbers. A number of these actions involved processes and cultural change, which took time to feed through and improve the compliance data, but you'll see from table one and table two, what those management actions are and which have been completed. Figure one and table three in the paper provide data on the number of breaches and of the procurement rules since 2223. And they show a significant improvement in non-compliance through to 2425 quarter one, where we currently have 15 procurement breaches, which is a significant reduction in procurement compliance. So the recommendation from the paper today is that due to the significant evidence that the management actions have taken a positive impact on compliance, that we continue to report quarterly to EDMs and CLB with regards to the number of breaches. And that six monthly, we reduce the audit committee reports to yourselves to ensure that that improvement continues and is embedded and that the culture has changed. There was a request in previous audit committees for a briefing on the procurement breaches and what that included. And we're happy to arrange that if after this report there are still concerns.
Thank you very much. So questions, yeah, I have Tom, David, Jonathan. Tom.
Okay, so looking at point 16 on page 140, a report showed almost all breaches are blasted on compliance with lack of prior authorization. And also, you know, great that we've gotten it down from where it was to 15, that's fantastic. But I was curious as to where those breaches tended to occur, was that due to a difficulty with the process of authorization? Was that because we had, for example, new council employees not necessarily knowing the rules? Instead, there was need for perhaps further education around the procurement process? I'm just, you know, more clarity on that would be great.
Yeah, thanks. So I think, I think I'm right in saying that one of the actions that's listed in the report, and I think is one that we focused on quite heavily early on, was around education and training, which is kind of obviously part of, kind of cultural change. So you'd say, yes, I think it is now, the training on procurement, avoiding procurement breaches is now mandatory for all line managers. So any line manager joining the organization is, will be expected automatically to complete that, that training as, yeah, as part of trying to. We felt it wasn't appropriate for every single employee to do that training because fundamentally, there's a lot of people that necessarily do any procurement work. If you're a line manager, then you may be in trouble budget, which point that, that was the target we really, so to try and make sure that we got, got those group of people.
That's great. That's suggesting that the drop has been due to more familiarity around those areas. Good. So the remaining these 15 and where they worked due to using non-compliant procurement routes. They, you know, is this still due to a lack of familiarity rather than anything else, or what were the reasons behind those, generally speaking?
So I think there's a, there's a mixture. I think some of it is around, it's not necessarily due to a lack of knowledge of the, what process should be. It's around a lack of planning around contract end dates coming up or a service need to start. So I think it's a bit of a mixture between, so obviously the training remains a kind of consistent picture of trying to focus on that. But actually, there's also pictures around trying to improve the extent to which we plan in advance of contract end dates. So some of these breaches will be relating to extending contracts without authorization. And you can extend a contract by action, as in just by continuing to receive the service. So that, that is a breach if you haven't received prior authorization. So if Mark wanted to, it's obviously important to be having those conversations and be making, making a conscious decision in advance at that moment to say, okay, are we, are we definitely wanting to enter into that, into that extension? And that's, yes, that's, that's one element that we're, we're focusing on.
Okay, sounds like you're on top of things. Thank you very much.
David?
Thank you, Chair. As some of you sat on audit the past three years, I am very gratified in the drop of the value of procurement breaches. And I would note that in 2223, the average was £241,000. And so far in 2425, it's only 85. So that's really good news. And thank you for the progress you've made on this. My question is, what's the target? Is it zero contract breaches? Or are we prepared to accept a certain number every year, please?
So this year, we've got a target of two per month. So there's a target of 24, which we thought was reasonable. And it also, it shows the commitment to reducing to zero. So our ambition is zero. But we wanted to be realistic and make sure that the target was reachable and achievable.
So the target's 2415 in the first quarter.
Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one, because my question has largely already been answered. But if, yeah, so if order doesn't get prior approval, then it does, does it go to the relevant manager to get retrospective approval? So the manager is aware of what's actually happened?
Yeah, and actually, so normally, procurement approvals are twofold. So one is it goes to a procurement officer, and it also needs to be signed off by essentially the budget holder, the person with the delegated financial authority to be able to approve that amount. So that's what normally happens. With breaches, actually, we, we, we make it so that the next officer up in terms of the financial scale needs to, needs to sign off. So essentially, there's that additional oversight to try and make sure that there is that scrutiny.
Abdul?
Just follow up on that. So is there mechanisms that are in place for the accuracy and timeliness of a breach of the reported to senior leaders? So how do you handle cases where breaches are withdrawn after and show reporting process?
Yeah, so I kind of touched on this very briefly in the report. So, so procurement decisions are entered onto a central, sorry, central log, central log. When, when they're first submitted to my team who put it on for, send it for authorization. So that's the point at which it gets recorded. And at that point, that is then available for, for reporting. So there have been, so in terms of visibility, there have been weekly reports going to CLB to, for them to have that visibility. The data is available on a live, live basis in terms of the numbers of these, very much focused on around trying to. So A, there's the decision itself will go to the relevant officers, so they have that visibility anyway. But in terms of the oversight of compliance, then there's also the, the data is available on a timely, in a timely way. So that people can, can see what the trends are.
Okay, folks, the recommendation for this report is for the committee to know the data on breaches of the council's procurement rules, management actions taken, and the significant improvements in compliance that have resulted. Are we happy to know that? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair, am I able to ask about the private briefing, if that's required, and do we need to arrange that?
How does the committee feel? Would they like a briefing on that?
I think it'd be good for members to have a historical perspective of what issues were.
Maybe a half hour briefing?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So we move on to item 14, which is Bristol Beacon Lessons Learned. And I think we have Pete Anderson is going to bring this item forward. Thanks, Pete.
Good afternoon. James Anderson, who's the program lead or been in the capital program, has been leading the Bristol Beacon program with myself and the team, and the council in conjunction closely with our capital delivery partner, Arcais. So I'm sure there are other questions which James would be able to answer. We'll bring James in accordingly. So the report that you've seen is a lessons learned report, which was commissioned further to evaluate the audit that was conducted into the Bristol Beacon. So we have a qualitative report which brings lessons learned across four strands of the program, looking at risk management, controls, project and program structures, procurement associated activities, as well as the leadership of the program. Earlier in the report, you'll see there is a, there's a timeline which brings to life the project going back to 2016. And the learning within the, the report really brings out in terms of a key milestone around 2019, when the project was reviewed from a capital delivery lens, where a new head of capital was bought in, a new executive director for G and R was recruited for, and a project director was recruited for specifically for, for the project. And that coincided also with the council entering the strategic partner arrangement for our capital delivery, which we appointed Arcais. And then there was subsequent greater control with reporting back into the council via three cabinet meetings as well. So I just hope, hopefully that timeline brings to life the journey that went on for the project from the outset. As we know, we opened the beacon at the end of November. We're still working through snacks with our contractors. We're pleased to say that there's a full program of events and the facility and the venues working really well. For us, in terms of what next, in terms of team, and in terms of the project and learning through the capital delivery. We've got approval to stand up a capital delivery team within our program office to really put that rigor and robust nature of our delivery of all of our capital programs and our capital pipeline, which does include major projects, of which Bristol Beacon has been the biggest capital program. And we've made a project with it delivered. So we're standing up the, the project management office purely for that tool in September, supported by and in conjunction with our delivery partner, Arcais. I'll leave it there. See if any questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, hopefully everybody's read the report. I've got a couple of questions myself just to kick us off. Do you know what proportion of the overspend on the project was due to factors which couldn't have been analyzed? Do you know what proportion of the overspend on the project was due to factors which couldn't have been anticipated, such as the pandemic and the Ukrainian conflict?
It's very hard to get a properly quantitative answer. You'll see in the report, there is a particular lesson learned around doing as much due diligence as possible within the structure of the building. So the current standard was there. That would have helped to some degree in this building, but there are significant parts of the infrastructure and the fabric of the building, which there are no surveys that we could have feasibly deployed to de-risk it, if you like. For example, the lack of foundations under wing walls. You need to take something out and dig up the floors and pull the walls down before you can understand that. So the short answer is, councillor, there's no definitive number I can give you, but I'm sure that there would have been some consignments, but it would be a lot less than, for example, potentially, you would think.
Yeah, I mean, so I think what I'm getting at really is there are obviously risks which, on a building of this age, possibly should have been allowed for and weren't early on in the project. But there are also risks which I imagine none of our projects had taken into account of in terms of their assessment, because they were completely unforeseen. And I was just wondering if we kind of had a balance between those two.
I think we do have maybe a high level assessment around the impact of Covid, war in the Ukraine, Brexit and so on, which I haven't got with me right now, but I could provide as a piece of information afterwards if I thought useful.
I think it'll be useful for them. So, yeah, I've got Nick and then Tom, Abdul, Patrick there, almost everybody. Right, Nick?
Just a quick factual question. I'll get into some substantive stuff after everyone else has turned. The report is written by Arcadis and it's the, an independent report. And it says that things got a lot better after a PMO was appointed. Did you just tell me that Arcadis were the PMO who were appointed?
Correct. So they are capital strategic partnership. This report was written by a team of nine of your own developing projects. But it is, the results of this are not through interviews with their own people, it is with the key stakeholders. So our organisation, such as the Bristol Music Trust, arts counselling, then first funders, council offices as well. So they haven't interviewed themselves, they've only interviewed stakeholders.
Gavin, Patrick?
Thank you, Jan. Thank you for bringing this to us. There's obviously a very significant issue for the council and one where it's lost public interest as well. I'll just jump right in. This report, it's interesting. There's a lot of, dare I say, management speak and stock photos of people going out doing business in construction. There's, doesn't seem to be much in the way of identifying individuals or organisations within the council who have come short or potentially or even failed in their brief. And for something like this, where we've had such significant overspends, that does seem like a bit of an oversight perhaps. It does seem like the council should maybe be trying to ensure individuals who maybe did make, came short on the beacon should be, should be made known to in order for it perhaps, or just that they shouldn't be entrusted with projects like this again. Certainly not until we're very certain that lots of lessons have been learnt from the beacon. And especially so when several of the significant issues that have been identified relate to governance of the project and failings in leadership. So I'm wondering why it is that we don't really identify individuals or organisations within the council who came up short? Or is it potentially a confidentiality issue, in which case it would be appropriate to ask for a confidential briefing on this perhaps? Thank you.
I'll start with you first. So this is the lessons learned report. This is us as council officers looking back at what has happened and how we could have done things better, where we can improve our ways of working and learn lessons from this project. It is not a tool to hold people to account for any key failings.
For me, I think in terms of the cabinet decisions that were taken post-two thousand and nineteen, in terms of the detail of why a major money was sought and the challenges that were within the project and identified by relevant departments and in response to, there is a lot of information in those three cabinet reports subsequently. That does bring that level of detail to life. But echo James's point, this wasn't to identify key officers. This was to put on the lessons learned in relation to how we can improve.
Thank you. I think your questions are all probably some of us.
Ask for more, Patrick.
Thanks. I suppose, how are we going to incorporate the lessons in this lessons learned report into our standard practice? I'm particularly, I'm noting that, and again, this is maybe sort of a ward issue, but I'm noticing a lot of the language being, talking around the failings that have occurred is language which is being used in a positive sense around the Western Harbour plans, particularly in terms of like engaging the stakeholder groups and the community. And I'm very keen to ensure that we get, we do learn the lessons from this very large significant project, for that large significant project. So could we get an update on the progress of implementing some of these lessons in six months, say? And how are we going to do that in the meantime?
So I think the lessons learned report, it's quite clear that there's a level of governance and corporate control that needs to be incorporated early in the project, particularly around reporting enterprise risks, the management of the risk of the strategic corporate power within the council. I think there's also some key lessons there around resources of the project and understanding what the resources, resource requirements are. And I think there's also some really interesting lessons there around making sure that we approach the risk for a part of the project appropriately and manage that and set up management back, whether that be through incorporating sufficient contingency or risk management plans therewith. So I think those things are the key takeaways for me. I think they stand across the whole capital portfolio. I don't think that addressing them at a project level one by one is sufficient, there's too much risk there for the organisation. We have, I'd say, as a council, taken a journey to set up a capital portfolio management office, which will integrate key lifecycle, lifecycle gateway frameworks, standardised reporting, enterprise risk management, using the Council's risk framework and really kind of creating a much healthier corporate culture around capital delivery. So that's due to be initiated in September now, we haven't got funding to do that. So I think that is the kernel around which we can really properly respond to the challenges set out in the lessons learned report. And apply that not just for Western Harbour, which is a really important programme clearly, but across the whole capital portfolio, which is nearly nine hundred and fifty million over the next five years. So there's a huge amount we need to make sure is substantially assured and put together.
I think, Patrick, it's kind of key what we're talking about here is this is a kind of value for money report. It's not off the back of an audit finding. So there isn't any, we haven't got a report that says these are the management responses that we're going to do for that. But I think you're right, that would be something that would be useful to see is what are the responses to the lessons learned? And maybe that could come back to the committee at some point.
Committee Chair, so there was an audit of the capital portfolio in two thousand and twenty and it was given limited assurance. So the capital portfolio management office is a response to that and is part of our drive to move to a substantial assurance for the capital portfolio.
Okay, Tom?
This is on one point three, effective project planning. And I appreciate this is Arcadis's language, not necessarily yours. But dedicate adequate time during feasibility and planning stage to thoroughly assess the project's feasibility and affordability. Now, I'm not familiar with the project, but I don't know how much was already allotted, how much Arcadis uses adequate, how, you know, what, what do we need to do to improve on this and how practical is it?
So Arcadis became involved in two thousand and twenty, in March of two thousand and twenty. So they were involved at the outset of the project. I think the report is quite clear that for a project of this nature, which is a listed historic building, we should identify as much as we can in terms of quality of the building before we start. But I think there is an implied lesson there, which is even if it is not a live concert venue, we need to be more stringent in trying to de-risk and understand the building. I would kind of caveat that, caveat that with the statement that all the surveys in the world wouldn't have shown us the significant amount of issues that we found. And so I would follow that statement, councillor, to say that we need to manage and understand our risk profile much better. So if we're working within a building which is a listed building, which has been burned down twice, we should probably understand that there's a significant risk of structural issues in the building. And our decision to actually be made on the basis that actually we may need more than ten percent contingency on the job.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nick?
Thank you. Well, I'll take this from a positive perspective. But this is our opportunity to get not just a great concert hall, but also a new framework for producing our capital programme. And this has happened for many major organisations that I've worked with. For examples, National Highways now have their product control framework. That was as a result of things going badly wrong in the past. Now they've got something that can be used every single time. Is that what we're doing here? And if it is, then that's really good news. I think that's the management response to this report that I'd like to see, as the chair has suggested, to explain to us what is the control framework we've got. And that would cover all of the aspects around who the client is, where we've got the regular check-ins, the controls over budget, risk and programme. And that does need to go out to all of our projects. Only a couple of weeks ago, I was on Transport Committee where we voted to get rid of the interim stage gates, treble the project budget and go straight to a final stage gate. I didn't think that was very good management. I don't want to re-litigate it here, but it's an example of how this kind of thing applies to every one of our projects, not just the fifty million pound flagship ones. Tell me what's going on and also tell me when you're going to write it down for us.
Councillor, I can agree with what you just said. I have developed that delivery framework, so it is now available to you. We have been working over the past eighteen months to find a way to deploy it into the rest of the capital portfolio. That is through the capital portfolio management office, which will sit like an umbrella over the whole of the capital portfolio. I would more than happy to sit with you and talk through the delivery framework and all the substantial waiting procedures, if anybody from the audit committee would like to.
If I may suggest, the way the reason for linking it with the audit committee work is that this report is a list of actions and your framework is the response to those actions. So as an audit committee, we would tie those two together and maybe at the next meeting confirm that maybe the authority has had regard to this report.
More than happy with that. Just as a note, when we received our limited assurance on the capital portfolio at the previous audit, I also asked for the audit team to review the delivery frame as well. And it was given substantial assurance and the task was to roll it out to the rest of the capital portfolio.
I think what we'll do is we'll agree a communication that can go out, this as well as noting there are more communications and says this is what we'd like to see, is the audit committee to give us some assurance that these lessons are being translated into actual actions within the authority. Does that make sense? Okay, Jonathan, did you have a question?
Yes, a comment. Thanks, Chair. So I submitted my questions to public forum and I received, it was three questions I received a response to those. I particularly look forward to seeing a revised net present value calculation based on a realistic interest rate, an appropriate interest rate. I agree with your recent comment, Chair, about the audit committee producing a comment on the findings of this report. I do think the report does show serious weaknesses in the planning and delivery of this project. So I think it's some contrition on the part of the council would be welcome.
Yeah, Abdul?
Thank you, Chair. I was fortunate on the beginning of this month to have received the Civic Award with the Beacon Hall, Bristol Beacon Hall was at the same time up for nomination, and I received Civic Award with us. But the difference was that my, the project I was receiving the award in was valued about half a million pounds compared to a hundred and thirty million pounds that the Beacon Hall has transpired into. And part of the reason why we were able to, I suppose, save money and deliver a project that was close to people's hearts in a reasonable budget was because, as trustees, we took our decent clothes off and put some overalls on and really got stuck in and helped with not only the oversight, but the day-to-day management and governance of the project. And that brings me to my question that in this type of project where there is a huge burden on the citizens of Bristol, as elected members, I do feel that we have some responsibility to overlook, to govern and to make sure that things are being delivered according to the wishes of the public. And I'm just wondering, maybe not reflecting on the past because we don't have that, but for the future, do we have something built into the capital programmes where elected members potentially could make a subgroup or something with such a big project? Because never underestimate the, you know, kind of significant experience and raw experience as well as the kind of oversight that the councillors on your benches could bring you.
Not quite sure what you're suggesting there. Are you suggesting that we put our overalls on and go down and tell them whether they're doing it right?
Not necessarily, but an oversight, I think, is important, even if it's just paperwork. I gave the example of the mosque that I rebuilt, which is a two-hundred-year-old building. But what I'm saying is in this particular context, obviously it's a huge project, but an oversight and being able to kind of listen to what's going on and respond and maybe consult with the public and other members and maybe recruit officers and expertise where required.
And I would expect, you know, within the committee system, that if there are projects that you want to hear more detail on, you would call for that information within your relevant committees.
The Chats was a huge project that was very, very close to Bristol's heart. And I think that members should have been really involved, elected members should have been really involved with the delivery and oversight of this project.
I don't think we disagree in any way, so we welcome engagement with councillors. I think I reflect, obviously, we were on a slightly different system when this was happening. We made a very specific point. I came to this in early two thousand and twenty, so the project was fourteen months in already. And effectively, the first thing that we did was come to cabinets with an update saying that there's something going on. We will need to come back again and let you know what the impacts of these issues are. And we returned to cabinet two times. So I think on the back system, we tried to engage politically, we did engage politically as much as we could in a public forum. We held ourselves to account. I think in the future, we would welcome engagement with committees in the appropriate way to make sure that we had, whatever that is, councillors, to make sure that we have that.
have that support and oversight there as well, and that connection to, to our citizens. Totally welcome that.
Have I missed anybody else who had, well?
I, I agree with Nick's comments about how we would, how we take this forward in terms of learning not just the lessons of this instance, but into the, into the outcome, into the framework for how, how we deliver this in the future. I, I am mindful that this is an Arcadis report of one, one incident, and that kind of what we want to see from it or next is a management report that says that this is what we've learned, this is what we're doing, has passed the normal framework, and I think we'd like to, 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 to see that. On the specific question, you talk a lot about how the PMO is in, in place, and how that has had an impact, and I think we're using that across the model. There's a similar report on project leadership, there's something about the kind of client director, or what's called the, the project sponsor. So is that in place in other, in other models, and have you, have you learnt, has that had an impact itself?
So, Councilor, so in regards to this project, I think the lessons ever more absolutely is clear there at the outset, in the early thirties, the project had been destroyed from the corporate entity and the lack of a key senior officer as a sponsor, and that was rectified in early twenty twenty. And in fact, we learnt a lot of these lessons as we were going through, and they have been implemented, and we actually finished the project with a high performing team doing, doing a really good job. And what this report is doing is, is really highlighting the lessons that we learnt up the way through. So I think that in this project, the answer is, is yes, and it happened very quickly once these, once this became escalated. In terms of the wider portfolio, I think that organisationally, I would characterise it as being some areas are really strong, and some areas are less strong, and I would be looking absolutely to the new delivery framework and the council portfolio and management office to really start to drive that culture and that structure, and to hold the capital portfolio to account for that, and to really give it the ability to assure that that is happening through good data and good information around, particularly around lifecycle gateways, where we can drop in and understand what is happening within the objects, and assure that things are being delivered in terms of artefacts and progress as they should be.
Perfect. David, I apologize, should I come to you ages ago?
Thank you very much, Chair. I've got some questions and comments about the delivery framework that you talked about. Does it actually define how you actually start a project and the prerequisites you need? Because I've been, I went back to the decision that was made in Cabinet in May twenty eighteen. There are five actions that it approves, four of which are about spending money. One is about giving the executive group director growth and regeneration, in consultation with such a one five one officer, that one officer, and the relative executive member is authorised to negotiate and execute the various legal agreements. So that does sound to me like there was a sponsor involved with this project, what they did after twenty eighteen, who knows? But the real issue that I have about here is none of these actions are about governance and monitoring, which you really fundamentally need. So does your template include those bits about governance and monitoring, please?
Yes. Yes, it does. And again, councillor, I'm really happy to talk that through with you and show you to give you some comfort, or come back to Audit Committee another time. I, I can't speak to that original report in twenty eighteen, because I was not involved at that time. But I think that fundamentally, the process for sparsing projects, from mandate through business case processes to full business case, to principal engagement, is, is all within the delivery framework, and, and which, which has been given substantial assurance, but can be improved as well. I'm more happy to update it in a bit, because these things can always get better.
One other point I'd like to make about this decision document, it says the decision maker is Cabinet. It doesn't mention a particular Cabinet member who might have responsibility for checking whether the money is spent properly. I think every project does need a political sponsor, as well as a officer sponsor, to make sure that there is accountability for delivering project, and that's completely missing from the beginning of the, the Beacon project.
I'm, I'm there yet, I, I can't speak to that report, but I, I take.
Simon.
Yeah, just, just a very quick point, you know, this project and a lot of what we're talking about are multi-year complex schemes with significant risks, and those risks will change over time, and I just wonder, from an assurance perspective, and perhaps not necessarily getting an answer now, how, say, internal audit will look to review schemes going forward, perhaps to give us a continuous cycle of assurance during the lifetime of these schemes, so that, you know, some of these issues might be identified, or we get assurance during them that, that things are going well, or where things need to, to improve.
Fair point, I think fair, fair point. Within the, you see that we didn't want to plan, make a provision for capital project orders, we do a risk assessment, and then use the risk assessment to identify the projects. So I think we've done, there are probably three reports, that are in the audit committee, the next probably two or three committees, that we've already completed, so the work is being done.
Sorry, Chair, may I just, thank you. I, I think that what would be really healthy would be to have that cabinet portfolio level understanding, councillor for, for capital portfolio. So there's one thing about having distorted projects turn up on your books, which you can look at, I think I recommend that Audit Committee at certain intervals has a view of the capital portfolio health as a whole, which, which should be reported by the capital portfolio management office. I think that would be quite powerful for you to agree.
I think that's, that's okay, James, I think we report to Audit Committee on a certain basis, so only ten reports that are linked to no assurance, so any project that we've done is limited to no assurance, will come to Audit Committee, but that conversation I think is probably, can rank it for the committee, but any individual project that's linked to no assurance will come here.
Okay, finally, Patrick, give the rotation.
Thank you. Very quick question, could I check how much this report costs, please?
I think, I can, is it commercially sensible, I don't know. Could I confirm that you are to the meeting?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just questioning myself, whether it's commercially sensitive or not, so it's, if I can check, I can, you know? Absolutely, I'll grab you after me, if that's right. Yeah, thanks very much.
Okay. I think.
Sorry, considering the, the bigger public interest and maybe other members' interest in this particular subject, I'm not sure how, but could we take this to full council for presentation, or for review, debate, and statements, talk, chat about where we are with this, just so that everyone can have the opportunity to ask questions and maybe be informed?
I think it's a fair point that, that other people should be able to ask questions like we do, what the, what the, what the form for that would be, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not going to make that decision.
I, I think it's very, it's a difficult discussion, but I think this report is coming to the Audit Committee for the assurance that the Audit Committee requires, so the Audit Committee needs to be satisfied that it has delivered its duty, and I think the other interest from other members is probably, it's a different conversation. The best that could happen is that I think that there's another committee that looks after growth and regeneration, probably that probably could be the fair way of dealing with it, otherwise, if we take it to full council, what's the recommendation for council?
I think simply to take the words out of my mouth, what I was going to say was, I think it's up to members of relevant committees, or, or the leader of the, of the council, if you so wants, to, to decide that they want to bring that, bring this somewhere else, it's not really for us to, to tell them where that report goes.
We were, obviously, the.
I'm sure you'll have those conversations.
Yes, I have a conversation about that, but it was just in the, in the interest of the public and, and members who represent the general public force.
Okay, so the recommendation is to note receipt of Bristol Beacon Lessons Learned Report, but I think we've also agreed that we, we would like to ask for a management summary of, of what actions are being taken as a result of this report. So, okay, we have it tonight? Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, coming along late, you know, late in the day, I don't think you're late. So now we have the Audit Committee Annual Report for Council draft report, hopefully this, this is not going to take another hour.
I'll take the report as ready, Chair, and take any questions, but just to say that this is retrospective, it's looking at what happened last year largely, and that's what you are saying to the what to do for council with keenness it is, you have got two opportunities to, to report for council, you report half yearly in November, and then you do this at the end of the year, but I'll take any questions. It's a report for the committee, as we discussed, it's written by the Audit Committee, we just facilitated, that's, that's, that's the idea, but I'll take any questions, Chair.
Yeah, I think what I would like to recommend, there are some recommendations in this report that thinks that the Audit Committee could do better. I think it would be quite good for us to get together outside of one of these formal meetings, and perhaps just have a discussion on, on how we could do that, and what, what things we do think we could do as well, and also talk about how we write this report for next time. So I think we'll organise something along those lines, I know we've had huge amounts of training recently, so we'll, we'll maybe give people an August off and try and do that early in September or something, how does that sound? Okay, Rob?
Yeah, absolutely support that. My only question is, it's a kind of a yearly annual report, so is there a process involving members who were on the committee last night, in particular the previous chair, so is there a mechanism to doing that?
So we, we have some members who were in the previous Audit Committee, we have two independents, I can see councillor Wookox and councillor Haka, and remember that in December, we took a half year report for council, so I'm broadly comfortable in terms of what you put in the report, and as long as the members who were in there are comfortable, I think, but it's a very, very straightforward report.
Okay, so recommendations, committee members consider and approve the Audit Committee's draft annual report to council for twenty twenty three.
Sorry, Chair, can I just cross check, you haven't made a mistake, there seems to be a member on the report that's just attended one meeting at the age, for such an important meeting, would that be allowed to be the case? On the report, page one hundred and seventy two.
Obviously, there was.
Thirty percent attendance rate.
Or page was.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's, that's the case, I think, I don't think I'm wrong, if that's the case, that's what I mean.
Just cross check if that's correct.
So, yeah, we believe that's correct, and hopefully that will not be repeated this year.
Thank you, Chair.
So going back to the recommendations, consider and approve the Audit Committee's draft annual report to council for twenty twenty three, twenty four, and consider and approve the Audit Committee's self-assessment report for twenty twenty three, twenty four, and agree next steps. And I think we've agreed the next step will be to, to get together and discuss the recommendations in that self-assessment report. Is everybody happy? Okay, lovely. So that's the last item on the agenda, I believe. It is some unfathomable time according to that clock, so I call the meeting to a close. We did, oh, I was going to say, we did discuss getting together after this meeting quickly, but I'm guessing there's not a lot of appetite for that right now, so we'll do that maybe in the September, September meeting, yeah. Okay, thanks very much, everybody.